Royal Commission into violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability is now in session.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the third day of Public Hearing 20 on Preventing and Responding to Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation in Disability Services, with reference to two case studies. We begin, as always, with an acknowledgement of country. We acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora nation, the traditional custodians of the land upon which Commissioner McEwan and I are participating in this hearing. We also acknowledge the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin nation, upon whose lands Commissioner Galbulay is participating in this hearing. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also pay our respects to all First Nations people attending the hearing and those who are following the hearing on the live stream. Yes, Mr. Fogarty?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, Ms Samantha Taylor returns today, acting commissioner of the NDIS, Quality and Safeguard Commission and Registrar. Ms Taylor, I understand you have a copy of your statement with you?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. That's for reference, that's Hearing Bundle F, Tab 5. Can I start by asking you what, if any, role the Quality and Safeguard Commission has to play in addressing, reducing and ideally eliminating resident-on-resident violence in group home settings?
So our role is to uphold the rights of all people with disability in the course of their participation in supports and services within the NDIS. Resident-on-resident violence and our role in that is through our regulation of providers who deliver those supports and services. And the evidence I set out yesterday, and that I understand Mr Head's given that sets out the roles and responsibilities of the Commission, describes the mechanisms through which we would become aware of those kinds of situations. And particularly, I'd add to that what we do in then working with providers to understand the extent to which they are supporting participants where violence might exist between them or between them and others to create a safe environment.
All right. The key role of compliance and enforcement in the main is that the priority is to work with and educate NDIS-registered providers, is that right?
That's right. The compliance is on providers and of course, workers and people they otherwise employ or engage to adhere to both the Code of Conduct and, if registered, conditions of registration that apply, of course, to the provider. The code applies to all workers. And of course, those obligations under the code apply to any provider or any worker delivering NDIS supports or services, even those that might not be registered.
Registered or unregistered. And there's a code for workers and a code for providers, is that right?
No, the code applies across all regularated persons. There is guidance, which the Commission produces, that assists both workers and providers in understanding how the code would apply in the context of their roles. So, for example, in the context of a provider's role to make sure that practices of their workers are meeting the code, and then of course, in the context of a worker, for example, their personal obligations around adhering to the code in the course of their duties.
All right. What powers or functions, and I know Mr Head has provided evidence in respect of that, but given you're now the acting commissioner, what powers or functions can, so what exists within your powers as acting commissioner in the Commission that can be deployed to reduce resident-on-resident violence? You gave some evidence yesterday about the supported accommodation inquiry. Assume that's the inquiry power as one of those powers?
It's a power to inquire. Yes, that's true. And it's an important inquiry. I think Mr Head gave evidence about how the Commission, and I shared as acting commissioner his views about this matter, how those powers in the complaints and reportable incidents rules would be applied in the context of an inquiry. In looking and exploring trends and systemic issues that might apply in the context of an individual provider or, you know, a group of providers around, for example, in the context of the inquiry, I've initiated a particular setting being supported accommodation. And that will allow us to get a sense of the various circumstances that we've accumulated through evidence that's come to us through reportable incidents or complaints about a range of things, including incidents that might have occurred because a participant is subject to violence and that relates perhaps to the behaviour of a fellow participant. And we will look at the extent and circumstances of those kinds of issues. I'd say the most significant power in this space is in the behaviour support space. Generally, the term that's used in this sector most commonly is behaviours of concern. And violence-on-violence, violence between residents can occur where residents either one or both have behaviours of concern. And of course, our role in behaviour support and improving the capability of the sector to respond to behaviours of concern, to minimise the risk of violence as well within that function. Of course, the behaviour support compliance obligations on providers relate to the situations where there are the use of restrictive practices on people to mitigate either harm to themselves or harm to others coming from, arising from violence or other situations. And that's the primary kind of regulation space, but it's good practice and we're doing some work on supporting implementing providers and workers around broader behaviour support activities which might not be subject to the obligations to have a behaviour support plan because they don't include a restrictive practice, but which would be designed to reduce the impact of those behaviours on a person.
Where there's violence or abuse from one resident to another, even though it may be a manifestation of a behaviour of concern, do you agree it's still an incident that should be recorded?
To the extent that it's an incident that affects, that occurs in the course of an NDIS support or service and involves...
In a group home setting, let's say, where SILs being provided.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, all right. And do you agree that even though it may be a manifestation of a behaviour of concern, it could still, depending on context, amount to a reportable incident?
Yes, if it affects another resident and that incident fits the definitions that are set out around...
That we discussed yesterday.
Yeah, because, and it's important that it is because it helps us understand the extent to which a provider is managing and supporting participants who might be exposed to violence of whatever kind.
Might it show deficiencies in behaviour support or need for support or education around BSPs? If you see that data?
Well, yeah, general BSPs to the extent that they don't provide for a restrictive practice, but if they do, then in that context also, how effectively a BSP's been designed. So there's not only an issue in this space for providers who are implementing, in our context of regulation, behaviour supports where there are restrictive practices involved, but providers more broadly who may be supporting people who don't require restrictive practices but do require some assistance with behaviour management.
Yes. But let's say you've provided education and support, but you, with a particular SIL provider, you've been monitoring their incidents and you see that more and more incidents are occurring and it may be that a reportable incident has occurred or more reportable incidents have been notified. Is there a point where the support or educational persuasion, as you might call it, in terms of assisting that service provider, where you might draw a line and you might need to step towards sanctions? There are sanction powers, correct?
Yeah, there are, yeah. And we do regularly use the intelligence that we build up through reportable incidents or complaints that might be separate to an incident or might be related to an incident that's already been reported, to get a picture of what's happening in a particular provider or a particular location to the extent that we can draw. I've given some evidence about some limitations on being able to really hone in on a location, but we certainly can do that. But there's been a number of instances where we've observed through individual matters, patterns that indicate that a provider may not be supporting their staff sufficiently to understand and engage with the issues and the supports that a person needs around those types of behaviours. And we've issued compliance notices, for example, requiring providers to do certain things like undertake reviews to report to us on the outcome of those reviews, to engage independent experts to assist and train their staff in building their capability to work with those participants to reduce any risk to others.
And we saw one of those yesterday, the September 2021, respective LWB. That's an example.
That's an example which was focused mostly on their reporting, but also dealt with the broader quality of their and compliance of their incident management. There are others that are on our register that relate to these kinds of matters, quite specific matters, where we've been quite specific about things like reviewing particular medications or bringing in experts to look at particular behaviours or particular events.
And that registers online, correct?
That's right. We're required to publish a register and include our compliance activities in the second part of that published register.
Other sanctions include enforceable undertakings, infringement notices, injunctions, suspensions, revocations of registration, banning orders and even civil penalties to get to that. Are you aware of whether any of those sanctions or powers have been used by the Commission today?
Of course, yes, I am well aware. We have not yet, to my recollection, used the powers around enforceable undertakings or injunctions, but we have used now every other power.
Yeah. And as I looked at your register, there are banning notices, quite a number.
There are quite a number of banning orders. Sometimes they are...
Providers and workers.
A significant number relate to workers. Yep. So individual matters. Just to explain, if you, we can use those powers jointly. So if there is an individual matter that raises particular concerns that relate to a particular participant, it could be that we might, we may and will have put in place a banning order around a worker who might have been the subject of allegation and shown to have contravened their responsibilities under the code. But we could also put in place a compliance notice for the provider generally to remedy any issues that we uncovered in the course of looking at a particular issue about a systemic problem with how a provider's dealing with a set of circumstances that are driving harms or so forth to participants.
All right. I'd like to ask you a couple of questions around obligations under the incident management rules, as I call them, the complaint management rules, with respect to LWB. In terms of, and you talked about this yesterday, recording incidents on that system or incident management system and a complaint management system, and also obviously if those incidents are reportable incidents, notifying the Commission. The obligations are essentially that each registered provider must have and maintain, and I guess keep up to date, an incident management system and a complaint management system. Is that something that the Commission sees as such? Is it on a portal or is it only reportable incidents that the provider's obliged to notify or show to the Commission?
Yes, yes, that's right. So the obligation is for... If you wouldn't mind, I just want to answer that question with a little bit, slight bit of context here. In thinking about our powers and how we deploy them and how indeed they're positioned within the NDIS Act, the powers of the Commission and the principles around quality and safety sit alongside the other principles and objects of the Act. And our role and the way in which the powers and the, under the Act and then the rules are constructed is very focused on building and educating the capability of people with disability to have a strong voice and to have choice and control, not only over what they receive and how they receive it, but to respond to issues that they're not satisfied about in terms of the issues that are covered in the code and where relevant, the practice standards, about their experience. And so the complaint system and the way of putting that obligation through providers around broader incident management and about broad complaints management is to place the onus on the people who are directly right there, supporting that person with disability, any person with disability, and making sure that that provider has the tools that enable that person to be able to make a complaint directly to them in the moment or whenever it might suit them and to be confident and satisfied that they'll be heard. So our job is to educate and the functions, the core functions of the Commission go to that issue. The rules then in requiring providers to have complaints in incident management systems are about that right of a person with disability to be able to remedy things and to be empowered to do so without any fear directly with the providers they have chosen to deliver their supports. Now, I know that in saying all that, that is the aspiration and there is a significant way to go in attaining that, but it is really important that that obligation is seen and understood to be with the provider and that people are satisfied that their providers have their best interests at heart and have ways of addressing their concerns whenever they have them.
Do you accept in that model that some of the gaps, as I'll put them, might be that there are vulnerable persons who don't have a voice, don't have sufficient advocacy? Do you accept that, particularly in group home settings?
Yes, I do. And we have done a considerable amount of work in the Commission, looking at this very matter. In fact, a very significant amount of our time and our thinking has gone into issues that arose from the death of Miss Smith in South Australia and developing our own approach to responding to risks for those participants who are at more risk of harm than others from others because they may have circumstances or the nature of their particular disability, their reliance on supports might not make what I've just described the most conducive system for them. And how we then work with the NDIA around making sure that together as partners under the Act, with those joint obligations under the objects and principles for quality and safety for participants, that we are identifying those people who might be more vulnerable and responding through outreach and other things to their particular circumstances. That is one of the very significant reasons that I've commenced that supported accommodation inquiry because all our data and information coming from other parties, including bodies representing the interests of people with disability, tells us that that is an area where more attention is needed. And I think Mr Head, indeed in my own evidence, my sense is that that inquiry will result in adjustments to how we approach the regulation of those settings.
I see. Do you accept another gap in that model? A second gap is what the community, what the person, what the participant, what the support people, what the family, what the advocates know about the Commission and the NDIA's department? Do you accept that without their knowledge of what they can and can't do or what rights they have, that again, the reliance on them coming to the Commission or the NDIA is fraught?
I think there's, I absolutely accept that. If you don't know where to come, you don't come. I also think, as I know, that people have had across Australia and indeed within their states or indeed their local communities, over many, many years of participating in the disability sector, not the best experience with raising issues, either with their providers or with other bodies. Sometimes there have been no bodies to raise issues with. Often those bodies have been able to observe complaints, to compile those complaints and make observations about what should be done in the system, but not have any powers to do anything in the system. And so there is an extra complexity to our establishment. And as I said yesterday, you know, just ticked over the first year of being national, but three years into South Australia and New South Wales, to build that understanding of participants and their support networks about what it is that we can do, which is very different to what they would have experienced in the past.
So it remains a work in progress. You have your website. What other resources does the Commission provide to that community, even support coordinators in the community, what they know or don't know about?
We provide, in fact, we get criticised constantly for providing too much information to people. So it's sometimes difficult to get a balance. We've been running a number of, this social media is a very well utilised platform in this sector, which is terrific. People use it for all sorts of things and use it very effectively. So we use social media to promote ourselves. We're doing further work to grow participant awareness about what we can do. We've done, and indeed in the midst of one thing, which I'll give as an example of the kind of participant outreach that we've been doing. In our first year, we initiated a grant with the Council for Intellectual Disability in New South Wales and South Australia, which is incredibly successful around direct engagement with people with disability by those bodies who are trusted bodies. I'll get to that in a second. But to build people's understanding in the context of the code and the practice standards, what their rights are and that the Commission is there to respond to those. That's got a similar kind of, we've now nationalised that, so Inclusion Australia is delivering that across the country to build that rights understanding. We have, I said I'd come to the issue of trusted voices. We have very strong relationships with advocacy organisations across the country and we've done three extensive forums with advocacy organisations to equip them and we use their networks constantly to promote our information because people will want to go to advocacy organisations that they feel comfortable with, the people that are employed in advocacy organisations. So it's no mistake that one of the Commission's functions is to assist people to engage with advocacy organisations. That's really critical. And of course, we've done a number of accessible pieces of work. The one that I, just by sheer demand, has been quite successful is the Worker Orientation Module on the Code of Conduct, which everything we do has been developed with people with disability and STARS, people with disability who are articulating what it means for them. We've had almost half a million people complete that Worker Orientation Module and it's not only workers. So we encourage people with disability to engage with all those materials because, and often we put all our materials into easy read or into other formats where they might be targeted at workers because it's incredibly important that people understand and are empowered to engage with the things we're telling the people that work with them every day to do so they can demand it too. It's an incredibly important...
So it's building the knowledge of the network around the person as much as the person?
Yeah, it is. And giving people with disability that understanding. I worked in this sector, as I said yesterday, a long time and, you know, success is when you do a consultation and people are coming to it, people with disability are coming to it with the code in their hand or the standards in their hand and saying, this is mine. Because it is, these are tools that are about their experience.
Indeed.
Ms Taylor, could I just ask you, on that note about your observation, what is your observation generally about service providers, perhaps using South Australia and New South Wales as an example? Are they becoming more proactive and receptive to what you're trying to achieve with supporting disabled people to become empowered to make their complaints or give feedback?
I would like to say yes definitively, but I don't think I can because the market... I think it's too general. I think there are certainly parts of the NDIS system where that is happening. I think a good example, if we can take something contemporary, is the vaccination programme for people with disability in COVID, where we have seen some of the larger providers taking very proactive steps to build hubs, to really, you know, engage the people they're supporting to be able to have accessible access to, you know, that suits their needs to the vaccination. And I don't think I would have seen that maybe five years ago. So I think, to answer your question, I think there's been a shift. I don't think it's a universal shift. The fact that we have as many matters as we have tells me that it's not a universal shift and that even within organisations where those broad strategies might be a feature, really the cultural change that's needed in this sector to really shift the attitudes of everyone in it to rights is an ongoing phase of work.
Thank you.
Ms Taylor, I'd like to ask you some questions now that arise from Claire Robb's statement. You understand she's the CEO of LWB. I'll have a copy of her statement provided to you. For reference, that's Hearing Bundle D, Tab 1. First part I'd like to take you to is on page 58. And it's paragraph 159. I'll read it for the benefit of those listening. It reads, "November 2019, Janine", and that's the sister of Amanda, one of the Melbourne House residents, "expressed an intention to print out all emails that raised concerns which had been, quote, disregarded. She raised particular concern about the standard of communication, Amanda's dental hygiene, staff training and qualifications, quality of food and frequent changes in management." Ms Taylor, my question for you is, do you agree that those concerns about dental hygiene, staff training qualifications, quality of food, frequent changes in management combined could constitute neglect, as that term is understood under the Act and the rules?
In total?
Yes, combined.
They could. I don't know that I could make a definitive assessment, reading a sentence like that.
What I'm trying to understand or assist the Royal Commission to understand is what work does that subsection C, abuse and neglect, have to do in terms of reportable incidents? If it were, well, take a step back. Isn't your toil in being definitive about this the same one that a service provider would toil with in whether it needs to report this as neglect as a reportable incident? Isn't it up to their discretion as to what they report?
Because it's an incident. So in the plain English term of word, the reportable incidents relate to incidents. If these things happened together as part of an incident, then they would certainly need to be reported if they were occurring within the course of a support or service. But I just want to make the point that the architecture we have within the NDIS Act does not funnel every particular concern through the incident channel. The framework within which we operate... The, the framework within which we operate would allow us to identify a number of these things through complaints quite appropriately or through the monitoring of a provider and the assessment of, of their activities through, through standards, for example. There are other mechanisms that, that apply, for example, frequent changes in management, depending on what Amanda, Amanda's experience is with that, that providers are required as a condition of registration to notify the Commission of other events and circumstances which might impact on their ability to deliver supports and services in line with their obligations as registered providers. That's under section thirteen and thirteen A of the Provider Registration and Practice Standard Rules. And so frequent changes in management that, that have the consequence of limiting their compliance with standards would be a notifiable event potentially under, under that particular condition, for example.
But if, if this came as a complaint from, in this case, Janine, would, would you expect the complaints officer or those that a person reports to, to consider, and it's a list of things here, except that, and except it's not a timeframe here, it doesn't say, you know, his dental hygiene was an issue every day of the week for the last four weeks. But would you expect the compliance officer or those they report to, to at least consider whether what they're looking at might amount to neglect?
Well, what we would look at would, would be whether or not it amounted to a contravention, be it under the, the code or other conditions of registration. And that might be neglect or it might be, for example, under the code, a failure to provide supports and services with care and skill, for example. So there are a range of a range of potential areas that, that this could point to if it was, if, if they were seen in together, a series of complaints that we might pick up that might have come from Janine about Amanda's experience to raise concerns about whether or not a provider was meeting their obligations in one location or indeed a series of workers in a location around those matters.
Again, trying to drill down on what the work of neglect has to do in that definition, clearly and tragically, Ms Smith's situation not only triggered A, death of a person with disability, but you'd agree neglect was front and square. As, as an, an example of neglect was her death in that case, as you understand it. An extreme example of neglect.
Well, of course.
All right. What I'm trying to understand is what level of, of incidence or number of incidents? Or is it totally at the discretion of the provider? Has to occur before they say, oh, hang on a minute, this could be neglect, this could be a reportable incident, we know the definitions, now we need to report it. That's what I'm getting at.
So I think we've provided, or indeed Mr Head provided all our documentation that, and many, many documents that provide quite detailed information to providers about how to determine whether an incident is a reportable incident. So there is extensive material, in fact, available to providers and it's available on, on our website. I couldn't take you to any particular part of that documentation, except to say that it is quite, quite thorough and the Royal Commission will have that available to them. I, I don't think I can, I don't feel comfortable in commenting based on a sentence in a submission I haven't seen before about
Whether it amounts to something.
Whether it amounts to something or, or of that, of that nature or not.
Are you satisfied to extent you would understand this, that providers do understand what neglect means?
Yes, I, I do, yes.
Can I ask you to look at page one hundred and four and one hundred and five of Ms Robb's statement? Should be paragraph two hundred and ninety seven. You see, it reads, common behaviours exhibited by a client which are identified in that person's behaviour support plan were not ordinarily required to be reported in accordance with the procedures I referred to in an earlier paragraph in question above. If the behaviour did not result in a person sustaining an injury or being at risk of injury and there was no risk of significant harm involved. Can I ask you then to look at paragraph two hundred and ninety eight? That's a one O five. Where it reads, similar to the operation of the previous policy before eyesight was introduced and as I understand it, eyesight is the reportable incident management system of LWB. Staff are not required to report a known client behaviour recorded on that person's behavioural support plan on eyesight where A, the behaviour did not result in a person sustaining an injury or being at risk of injury. B, there was no risk of significant harm involved. C, the behaviour requires no further remediation other than those outlined in the person's behaviour support plan. And D, the behaviour is being actively and effectively managed. In terms of recording and reporting or notifying a reportable incidents, again, referring back to the definition and what's required under the rules. Do you consider, again, I've taken this in isolation, but do you consider what you've read there in terms of a, of a reporting policy to be best practice?
I can't answer that question. I've only just seen this and I couldn't tell you whether it was best practice or, or not because in determining whether it was best practice, I would need to think about how it compared with practice of other providers and I, I'm, I'm not I'm not in a position to, to make that.
On the face of it, could you, could you tell the Royal Commission, do you feel you're, you're able to tell the Royal Commission whether appears to be compliant with the incident management rules?
It does appear to be. It does appear to, from what you've just read, which is the first I've heard of it, seen of it, as I've said, that it's endeavouring to make, strike a balance between what is needing to be overseen by the provider with other records that the provider has that might assist them in, in managing and responding to issues related to a person's support needs.
Isn't there a risk that in this situation, just taking, and I accept you've only just read it, and it's only part of a a statement from Ms Robbs, but isn't there a risk that a resident being exposed, say, to weeks or months or even years of sustained behaviours of concern from another resident? Even if those behaviours of concern or the manifestations of those behaviours are sought to be managed and referred to in a positive behaviour support plan? None of which might cause or physical harm or injury or individually amount to risk of significant harm, which is the wording in that, in that paragraph. Couldn't that still constitute, again, looking at it globally, over weeks, months or even years, abuse or neglect? As that term is understood under the, under the Act?
I have to be honest and say, I need to think about that. I haven't thought about that in those terms. So if, if, if that's okay. Having just read this and, you know, you've put it to me in a way that I, I haven't actually thought about. And I, and I just want a little bit of time to think about how that would work across the functions because you know, it's, it's not only the, the incident reporting, as I said, that we receive this information. We, we monitor where there are behaviour support plans that are lodged with the Commission. We monitor their implementation. We're able to see across, across all our information what's happening for an individual if that's needed. And we're using, as I said, the other, other powers about broadly understanding what's going on in the sector that the inquiry, for example, would capture a lot of these. The, the Own Motion Inquirer, as I said, would capture a lot of these kinds of trends and issues to give us a sense in undertaking that inquiry, how over an extended period of time, a provider might have managed particular instances like you're referring to over an extended period of time. Because that inquiry will look at not only incidents and complaints that have been reported to us, but those which have not. So in, so, so really that, that power is, and that inquiry is, is significant because it would enable us to surface the kinds of things I think you're referring to and determine whether or not there needed to be some adjustment either within our own practice, but in provider practice at an individual level, individual provider level or at a system level to address those kinds of trends.
Can I ask you to turn to page one hundred and six, paragraph three hundred of that statement? In that paragraph, I'll just read this part. Staff are however required to escalate, record and report recurring or cumulative harm or patterns of abuse that, when viewed together, suggest a pattern of significant harm. Firstly, do you agree, or can you comment on cumulative harm or patterns of abuse in some circumstances? And obviously it relies on the individual circumstances, but those could constitute abuse or neglect?
They, 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 they could over time, yeah, absolutely, they could. And I think that that comment read in isolation is what I'm referring to, that, that I'll use another example. If that's okay to illustrate what, from, from, as, as a regulator, what, what we're doing, what we do around this issue of cumulative harm and assessment of cumulative harm. We did a scoping review in twenty nineteen around preventable deaths and Professor Julian Troller of the University of New South Wales did that scoping review for us because we, we didn't have a baseline when we started. So and what I mean by that is that, well, we, we, we none, none of the information and records that had been accumulated by the regulators or other bodies that came before us were transmitted to us. However, those other bodies did undertake various reviews and published various findings about things that impacted on the, the safety, wellbeing and instant, you know, factors driving harm to people with disability. And so we, in, in looking at undertaking that scoping review was to look at the previous evidence and then to use that so that our evidence was stronger and able to be layered on top of it and for us to be able to act and, and and really start to identify risk triggers that would help us as a regulator identify where a sequence of events might constitute a cumulative harm, to coin Ms Robb's phrase. So it, it is an important part of the model, but cumulative harm is, is identified by us as the regulator, but also a key reason why providers are required to have incident management systems that they can use to identify, learn from and remediate issues that are driving harm for people with disability that they support, either in the moment or for a particular individual, but across their practice more broadly.
So it's, it's, it's crucial, isn't it then, that, let's say, disability support workers in a group home are recording those incidents? Whether there's a, there's a range of critical, significant minor, because over, over time, if those are recorded as incidents, one, that is the LWB, one may look at that and, and see a trend, which may then suggest to LWB, for example, that there is some real issues here, maybe neglect, maybe, maybe some form of abuse, not intentional, but in a sense inadvertent.
That's, that's, that, that is correct. And if we were to go back to that paragraph that you took me to earlier about Janine's observations about the experience of, of Amanda. A number of those matters, dental hygiene, poor quality food are things that were identified in the scoping review that we did in twenty nineteen about precursors to serious harm for people. And which have, and that, and that scoping review has, for example, resulted in us already amending the practice standards. And in fact, next week, a new practice standard around mealtime supports, which we, which came into effect earlier this year will be, become an obligation on providers around mealtime supports as well as dysphagia, a separate standard on dysphagia because those things drive real risk. As does, I mentioned yesterday, communication. So we've recently rela- released a, a training tool for providers to use with their workers around, which is similar to the Worker Orientation Module I described earlier, which is designed to help workers engage with communication factors that drive issues for people. And we have a range of other things to do with the health interface between the NDIS and health systems that's related to the recent release of the roadmap for health supports. I can't recall the exact title of the, the document, but we are very engaged in, in, in that work because those the absence of supports around those things for people, the absence of supports to assist people in ga- in engaging, for example, in dental hygiene, in general healthcare, can have a cumulative effect that can drive other things, including behaviours of concern, which is a well-known issue in poor dental hygiene and also poor quality.
I do, and I just, I'm sorry to pause you there, Ms Taylor, but I know the time. Can I ask, I'd like to ask you one question arising from Mr Stephen Dolly's statement. And that's at Hearing Bundle C, Tab 1. It's at paragraph three hundred and seventeen on page one hundred and four. At that paragraph, and I'll read it out again for the benefit of the public audience. Reads, incidents that must be reported to the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission, known as reportable incidents, are serious incidents or allegations which result in harm to an NDIS participant and occur in connection with NDIS supports and service. Do you agree with that?
Yep.
So is it the case that, do you agree that an incident must be serious? Is that a gloss that's required before it's a reportable incident?
Are you able to draw the rules up for me? Because so I can just see the framing.
The provisions of the rules and of the Act, Chapter Four, Division, Part Three A, Division Eight, and the rules speak for themselves.
Indeed.
I'm not sure that Ms Taylor's interpretation, and I'm not criticizing it, I'm not sure it advances matters very far.
Might please the Commission. Last question I have for you before I hand over to Commissioner Ms Taylor is in respect of the National NDIS Workforce Capability Framework. In short circumference, if you can, what, what is that?
It's tool for providers and for workers around the kinds of behaviours, attitudes, culture that would enable workers to be delivering supports and services that, that met things like their obligations under the code and the intent of the Act and, and the standards. So it's also a tool for providers to assist them in focusing on training recruitment. So how they design jobs, the kinds of attitudinal issues that they'd like to see within the workforce that they employ, working with NDIS participants. It's, it's really focused on what you would expect workers to be doing and the attitudes they would bring to a job to assist them in delivering supports in the way that we aspire to under the NDIS.
When you say it's a tool, what, what output is expected from that framework? What things, what resources will the Commission provide to providers specifically?
Oh, any number of things. So the, the, the framework itself has been developed over the past eighteen months to two years with an extensive consultation with people with disability, representative bodies and, and providers. So the, the tool itself is, is there as a resource and is available now in an interactive web form. And there's an eighteen month program of developing a range of tools, both for participants, workers and providers about how to utilise and apply that, that framework. So it's a, it's a resource that will, that assists compliance, if you like, in the most basic terms.
And that, so that resource is now.
It's available, yeah.
All right. And is it, can one see it on, on the website or is it?
Yeah, it's got a dedicated website that is able to be navigated from our own.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Commissioners, those are my questions I might hand over to.
Yes, thank you. Ms Taylor, under the Act and the various rules, the commissioner has very formidable powers, do you not? To investigate, to cause investigations to be made, to require service providers to do all sorts of things. Can you articulate, please briefly, the philosophy that you consider should be adopted by the commissioner? I appreciate your, an acting position to utilise those powers. How active is the, is just, should the commissioner be proactive in investigating, monitoring, requiring service providers to act in particular ways? What's the philosophy?
The philosophy set out, we have a compliance and enforcement policy chair that sets out the philosophy for the commission in deploying those various tools and others that are precursors to using those.
What is, what is that thought?
Proportionate, appropriate and responsive. And what that really means is deploying the right tool for the right circumstance, being fair in determining when to deploy those tools and being responsive when we need to be very swift, for example, in a, in a particular situation or in response to a particular situation.
About being proactive?
Proactive, yep.
How are you proactive?
How are we proactive? So we might, we, we have since our second year of operation developed national compliance programs, which are initiated because of things we've observed, not on an individual matter, but on a system level or things we're aware of. I mentioned the scoping review. I also mentioned, Ms Smith, that, that event resulted in extensive proactive compliance action around sole carers and arrangements for providers to make sure that they were meeting their obligations under the code and practice standards around people who were in, receiving supports in their own homes. We've done extensive proactive compliance strategies around unauthorised use of restrictive practices and that is ongoing and adjusting constantly. So we, we've, we've captured through our compliance activities, which have been proactive as opposed to reactive, thousands of providers and initiated hundreds of actions either through show causes or our, our compliance takes us from in a traditional pyramid of compliance and enforcement practice. Just, you know, through the educative, through to in the most serious matters banning, of which we have done quite a, quite a number of banning orders.
Thank you. Commissioner Galbly, do you have any questions for Ms Taylor?
And my question is about guidelines and forgive me if I've misunderstood this, but would, would you be considering issuing a guideline about choosing who you live with to ensure compatibility or to promote the likelihood of compatibility?
I need to think about that question in the context of the, the functions. I'm not sure that we would provide particular guidance. We don't have a role, for example, in supporting people to make those decisions. Our, our regulatory functions relate to providers that are chosen by people and the delivery of a support and service once chosen and, and delivered. Issues around how a person with disability might think about what quality looks like for them and what good experience looks like for them might be a piece of work that we might consider doing in the future with the National Disability Insurance Agency, for example, as a tool for participants. Our particular focus being on the kinds of obligations we would have on providers. For example, obligations that re- that rest with specialist disability accommodation providers around their obligations under tenancy management, if I recall that correctly, around those practice standards for working with all participants to make sure that their, their living situation meets their needs, their collective needs. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. It's really, in, in terms of behavioural support, would that be considered to be an important question? Compatibility and choice about who you live with?
It, it is an important consideration from the perspective of, I think, information available to people about the people that they might be living with or contemplating living with. Function of, I don't know that in and of itself, it, it's, it's a particular issue, but of course, what you're asking is a really complex and deep question about what each person involved in a decision about who they might reside with and where they might reside would need to take into account. So, and I, and I think that any guidance that we might provide together with the NDIA on this in the future would need to be very carefully crafted around the rights of all people who might be living in a particular place and, and their, and all their, their rights equally.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKeown?
No, thank you.
The question asked by Commissioner Galbly would fall directly within the commission's core functions, wouldn't it? Under section one eighty-one A of the Act to develop a nationally consistent approach to managing quality and safeguards for people with disability.
It, it could do. I didn't dis- discount her suggestion. I thi- I think Chair, I would need to think about how that was framed within the, the, the rest of the functions of the, of the commissioner and how we made sure that in, in providing that guidance, we took account of how other decisions within the NDIS and around that, any particular person's choices and their, and support for their choices were, were enabled.
All right. Thank you. Now I'll ask whether any legal representative wishes to seek leave, to ask Ms Taylor any questions. I will take silence as no. There being silence, that will be taken as no. Thank you very much, Ms Taylor, for coming to the commission and giving evidence and for your detailed statement. We appreciate your attendance. We apologize for the inconvenience of detaining you for an extra day, but now you are free.
Thank you so much.
I think Mr Pogarty, you propose to take a short break. It's now ten thirty. We will resume at ten forty.
Thank you, Chair.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr Pogarty.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The next witness we'll hear from is Catherine, who's provided a witness statement to the Royal Commission about her daughter Rebecca, a former resident of the Melbourne House. That statement is at hearing bundle B, tab two. Commissioners, Catherine is unable to provide live oral evidence during this hearing due to her responsibilities caring for a seriously unwell family member. However, we have a, an audio pre-recording of her reading her witness statement, which she asked to be played during this public hearing. Those following the public webcast, as I said, will hear the audio of the recording, but will not be able to see Catherine's face. Before we commence Catherine's recording, I'd like to provide a warning to people watching or listening to this hearing. Today's proceedings will include allegations of violence, abuse and neglect of people with disability. The Royal Commission encourages people who may be distressed to seek support. A slide will now appear on the webcast with relevant contact numbers if assistance is required. If any part of today's evidence raises any concerns for any person, the relevant referral numbers are the National Counselling and Referral Service, one eight hundred four two one four six eight, Lifeline, one three one 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 four, one eight hundred, respect the number, one eight hundred seven three seven seven three two, Beyond Blue, one three hundred two two four six three six. In the recording about to be played, Catherine will talk about her daughter Rebecca, who is forty-four years old and grew up in her family home in Melbourne. She will tell you that Rebecca loves movies, classical music, and she will tell you how close she is to her family, particularly her niece, with whom she has a very strong bond. Rebecca is autistic and also lives with intellectual disability. It helps Rebecca when she has a daily routine and when those supporting her are familiar to her and are gentle, calm and patient with her. If Rebecca feels frightened, anxious or overwhelmed, she can sometimes exhibit behaviours of concern. Catherine will tell the Royal Commission that in twenty eleven, aged thirty-four, Rebecca moved into the Melbourne House. She will talk about Rebecca's exposure to and experiences of resident-on-resident violence and abuse in the house. Catherine will describe how Rebecca is physically very small and was and is vulnerable to aggression and conflict in her home. Catherine will share with you the impact of these experiences on Rebecca, as well as her own experiences in advocating for her daughter to be safe in her own home. Catherine will also tell the Royal Commission of the very difficult and complex process of finding somewhere else for Rebecca to live, somewhere where she is now safe and happy, including her experiences of navigating the NDIS. Lastly, Commissioners, Catherine has provided some photos of Rebecca to you that are in your bundle. Catherine has provided them to you not only so you can see Rebecca doing the things she enjoys, like walking in the park, but also she wants you to appreciate Rebecca's small stature, particularly in the context of the resident-on-resident violence that she was exposed to. Catherine now, will now read her witness statement.
This statement made by me accurately sets out the evidence that I am prepared to give to the Royal Commission into violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability. This statement is true and correct to the best of my knowledge and belief. I wish to tell the Royal Commission about some of the experiences of my daughter, who I will refer to as Rebecca, although that is not her real name. Rebecca lived in a supported accommodation residence provided by Life Without Barriers, LWV, in Victoria, which I will refer to as the Melbourne House. In particular, I wish to share the concerns I had about her safety, which led to Rebecca leaving the Melbourne House in two thousand and nineteen. And my obsessions, observation, sorry, observations concerning some systemic issues, systemic issues about Rebecca. Rebecca, who is forty-four years of age, grew up in our family home in Victoria with my husband, my other daughter and myself. Rebecca loves watching movies, enjoys listening to classical music and is very fond of baked goods. She likes outings to the park, going out for a cup of tea or coffee with me or going to the zoo and looking at the animals, especially the owls and rabbits. Rebecca is fairly physically fit and energetic and as well as walking in the park, she loves being around water. Rebecca was an active and noisy baby. When she turned two, she suddenly stopped speaking and no longer responded to her name. I felt that Rebecca might need an assessment and I took her to a paediatrician, who said to me words to the effect of, let's wait and see what happens and we can check again when she's five years old. I knew that something wasn't right and had a feeling that Rebecca needed more than this. Certainly before she turned five, I did everything I could and took Rebecca to occupational therapy, speech therapy and a psychiatrist. The psychiatrist told me that she might be autistic. Rebecca was subsequently diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder and intellectual disability. I was able to get her into an early intervention preschool for autistic children. After that, Rebecca went to a special developmental school at around seven years of age. Rebecca began to remove her clothes at the school, which I learned was a sign that she was upset and anxious. At around eleven years old, Rebecca's behaviours continued to escalate. She was screaming often and would bang her head when distressed. After school, Rebecca started going to a day placement for people with disability. Rebecca never attended a mainstream school. For all her life, Rebecca has required help with personal care as well as all her daily living activities. She is not able to live by herself. She also needs help making decisions and I am her guardian in respect of all decision-making. She is physically very small with small hands and limbs. For more than twenty years, Rebecca has attended a day programme run by Araloon five days a week, which is very important to her. Rebecca is always happy to go to a day placement and where she creates artwork and assists with gardening. She also goes to a disco and participates in a travel programme. She loves the leisure support that Araloon provides, known as RecScape, especially visits to farms. Rebecca has limited speech and will often speak in single words or short phrases, but she usually gets her point across if people take the time to listen to her carefully. Most of the time, she has great listening and receptive skills. The use of photos can help her to understand her daily routine and what to expect in her day. Rebecca can understand the simple two-step instructions and requests. It helps her if those supporting her are gentle, calm and patient. She thrives when she is acknowledged and engaged. Rebecca is intelligent and generally patient with those helping her. She often has a laugh observing and listening to others. She loves her family, especially her niece, with whom she has an especially strong bond and enjoys visits with us all. Rebecca shows she is upset by her behaviour. Sometimes she can get frustrated or overwhelmed in loud environments. She doesn't respond well if people are in her personal space when she's anxious. If she's upset or distressed, Rebecca can start to pace and if she's very anxious, she'll remove her clothes. This can happen if she is supported by unfamiliar people or there are changes in her routine. Rebecca's behaviour can sometimes escalate further to things like grabbing other people. She is very influenced by the behaviour of those around her, particularly if there is conflict. Rebecca prefers quiet and comfortable spaces and she is at her best when her day follows a predictable and structured routine. Rebecca's moved to the Melbourne House. Rebecca lived at home with my husband and me until she was thirty-five years old. She then moved into full-time care because we were no longer able to support her fully at home. It was an awful decision for us to have to make, but we had to relinquish her. At the time, I was working full-time and becoming increasingly overwhelmed. The available respite service could only take her once a month. I recalled Rebecca's psychiatrist telling me that I would be gone one day and Rebecca, and Rebecca would need support from someone other than myself and my husband. At first, Rebecca lived in temporary accommodation where other people with disability would attend on weekends for respite. After this, she stayed for six months with one other resident in another temporary accommodation. Then, in two thousand and eleven, she moved into the Melbourne House, which is about half an hour from where we live. I understand that at the time Rebecca moved in, the Melbourne House was newly purpose-built for people with disability by the then Victorian Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS. Life without barriers was engaged in some way to provide support, staff and services to the residents within the ha- the home, but I am not aware of the formal arrangement between LWB and DHHS. I believe, I believe there was also a community housing organisation called Active that was involved in some way, although that arrangement is not entirely clear to me and we had no direct contract or agreement with Active. I do not recall having a formal contract or agreement with LWB at first, but I think we were provided with some kind of statement, sending out the rental charges and other information in relation to Rebecca's accommodation at the house. We papered to them out of Rebecca's disability support pension for her room, her meals and her utilities. As far as I am aware, LWB were also responsible for providing staff who supported the residents. who supported the residents of the house and things like personal care, cooking and mealtimes and so on. Later, LWV did provide us with service agreements. The house was built to accommodate five residents with five bedrooms, a kitchen and a living room. Rebecca moved in first with a male resident, who I will refer to as Marco, although that is not his real name. Soon after, they were joined by Stevie and Amanda and then Robert, also not their real name. Later, after Stevie moved out, another resident, who I will refer as Katie, moved in. From the beginning, I visited Rebecca at least once per week at the Melbourne House. I developed positive relationships with the support workers there. I spoke to them in person at least once a week and I also rang twice a week. To this day, I still speak to some of them. I told the support workers that they could always voice any concerns with me confidentially. I did this to ensure I knew what was going on when Rebecca lived, where Rebecca lived, while also being mindful that the support workers may not want to do anything to jeopardise their jobs. Prior to the introduction of the NDIS in Victoria, Rebecca received a variety of services from a range of other service providers and organisations funded through her individual support package, ISP. Rebecca's experience at the Melbourne House. When Rebecca moved into the Melbourne House, I do not recall there being any consultation with us about her compatibility with the other prospective residents of their willingness to live together. We were simply told the accommodation was available and that was where Rebecca could be placed. Two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fourteen. As I was frequent visiting the Melbourne House and speaking with the support workers there, I began to learn there were various problems at the house, particularly with respect to Rebecca and Stevie, who appeared to have very different needs, support needs, to the other residents. The support workers told me about some incidents, but I also became aware that there may be some problems through Rebecca's deteriorating behaviour, which was her way of communicating with myself and the support workers. Stevie would often be physically and verbally abusive to the staff and the other residents, including Rebecca. I understand that her behaviour resulted from various problems and health issues that Stevie had and I believe the Melbourne House simply was not the right home for her. The situation created a lot of tension, anxiety and unease. Sorry. Tension, anxiety and unease in the house, which negatively impacted Rebecca's physical health and her behaviour. The situation meant that Rebecca was scared when she was in the house while the support staff tried to take action to prevent Stevie from attacking her. It did not work. Rebecca began to experience severe bowel issues and dystonia soon after beginning to live at the Melbourne House. Our family doctor informed me that Rebecca's bowel problems were likely directly related to Rebecca's stress over living with Stevie. This is set out in Rebecca's ISP funding plan approved on the eighth of April, two thousand and fourteen, which also describes the other effects of Stevie's behaviours on Rebecca and lists among Rebecca's goals to feel safe in my own home. Given the impact Stevie's behaviours were having on Rebecca and the other residents, I began to advocate for another place to be found for Stevie to live. The families of the other residents were also involved. I would like to emphasise that we did not have any personal dislike of Stevie, nor blame her for the situation. We just felt that it was not in our relatives' interests, nor indeed in Stevie's interest, for her to be living in that environment. I do not think Stevie had any family to advocate for her and I felt sorry for her and wanted to help her, but Rebecca's safety was my number one priority. The support staff working at the Melbourne House were very aware of the problems and my recollection is that at least some of them agreed with our view that it was not the right place for Stevie to be. I could also see that Stevie appeared to be a lot happier when she was by herself. I had many conversations with various LWV managers and DHHS staff about my concerns with Stevie living at the Melbourne House. I raised my concerns with LWV managers who seemed to be responsible for the house, but who were not always physically present, for example. We also raised our concerns with DHHS, as we understand from LWV that it was DHHS's responsibility to find a different placement for Stevie. We had a meeting with a representative of DHHS in August, two thousand and thirteen. They said there was no accommodation immediately available for Stevie, but they would discuss with LWV the provision of additional staff support for the house. Finally, Stevie was moved out of the Melbourne House in December, two thousand and thirteen. I do not recall exactly where she moved to, but heard since that she was living by herself with support and is much happier. Two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and nineteen. After Stevie left the Melbourne House, a new resident arrived in early two thousand and fourteen, namely Katie. I do not recall being consulted or Rebecca having any say involvement in who moved into her house. It is my understanding that Katie was already receiving support by LWV at her previous accommodation. I therefore believe that LWV was already aware of her history of behaviours of concern, which could include verbal and physical abuse towards her peers. It is difficult for me to understand why LWV moved Katie into the house when they were aware of her capacity to be aggressive towards others, especially after what had already taken place at the Melbourne House with Stevie and the impact it had on Rebecca and the others. Soon after Katie moved in, she began to exhibit aggressive and sometimes violent behaviour towards others, including Rebecca. I got the impression that Katie didn't pick on Robert, who was often in his own space in the Melbourne House. If Katie picked on Marco, he would often fight back. Rebecca, however, is a gentle person with a small brain, excuse me, or more she would sometimes scream if she's clearly assaulted. She would not say stop or ask someone to go away if they were bothering her. I do not believe I was always told about each and every incident and cannot recall all the details of every incident I was informed about, but I do remember it was very distressing and I was constantly worried about Rebecca. I do remember that sometimes in early two thousand and fifteen, Katie hit Rebecca on her up back. I believe police were informed of this and an officer spoke to Katie, but there was no formal investigation. I got the impression that the support workers were not sure how to respond to Katie's behaviour or what the best course of action was, but I do believe they tried their best. It also seemed to me that support workers may have been scared or intimidated by some of Katie's behaviour, particularly as she could lash out at support workers themselves. In addition, I felt that casual support staff were not always aware of the situation and what to do. Around this time, I asked staff not to allow Katie to be alone with Rebecca. I also became aware that support workers were regularly locking Rebecca in the staff room with them in an effort to protect her from Katie. Along with the families of some other residents, I also had some concerns about the general cleanliness and upkeep of the house from time to time. We raised these matters with LWV managers who we had contact with and it always seemed very drawn out and complicated to get things resolved quickly. I firmly believe that many of the problems at the house and the inability of the support workers to deal with Katie's behaviours stemmed from the fact that there was a constant stream of different LWV managers with various titles and roles who seemed to be involved for a while and then leave. These managers were responsible for more than one LWV house and so were not present at the Melbourne House all the time to get to know the residents and the families and to fully understand the complexities of the residents' needs. There were some good managers who did their best, but it always took them a while to get up to speed and to try to put things in place to assist. And then they would be gone and we'd have to start again. In addition, it seemed to me that having support staff who knew Katie, Rebecca and the others was crucial to making sure that conflicts didn't arise between the residents and behaviours didn't escalate into violence. While even permanent support workers who knew the residents could not always prevent things from happening or find ways to de-escalate situations. It was even more difficult for temporary or agency staff who did not know all the history and strategies required. A report from Rebecca's occupational therapist in December, two thousand and sixteen, highlighted that she can find it difficult to cope if her environment changes, which includes different staff. If Rebecca is supported by unfamiliar staff or her routine or environment changes, then her anxiety can increase, leading to self-harming behaviour, yelling, taking her clothes off, pacing or smearing her faeces. I was therefore always particularly worried when I found out that only agency staff were working in the house and I sent a lot of emails to LWV asking that every effort been made to avoid this. It also seemed to me that while LWV may have documented incidents that resulted in injury that might require to be reported elsewhere, they did not make efforts to track the level of conflict in the house more generally or to question why it was like that and what needed to be done to prevent it. Again, I am not criticizing the support workers who did an amazing job in the circumstances, but the managers and those higher up in the organisation just did not seem to need to understand the gravity of the situation. I was aware that from time to time Katie would make allegations that support staff or other residents had done inappropriate things to her. I was not provided with all the detail, but understood that this was an aspect of her behaviours that LWV had to manage and that it could be a very disruptive if staff had to be stood down pending necessary investigations. I did feel from time to time that these types of allegations may have influenced how Katie's more aggressive behaviours were responded to. The situation deteriorated in two thousand and eighteen and into two thousand and nineteen. I remember a terrible incident in September, two thousand and eighteen, when Katie apparently dragged Rebecca along the carpet and pulled out her hair. I remember Rebecca had a large clump of her hair pulled out and carpet burns on her knees. Through a complaint I later made to Victoria's Disability Services Commissioner, the DSC, discussed further below. I learned that the report for this incident stated staff did not witness the incident, but did hear Rebecca scream and then saw Rebecca on the floor with a bruised and skinned knee and some of her hair pulled out. To my knowledge, LWV did not contact a doctor to examine Rebecca. Over a week later, I took Rebecca to the doctor myself and the carpet burn on her knee had become effective. I was told by someone from LWV that doctors were not contacted because Rebecca did not have an open wound. Yet Rebecca developed a scab on her knee shortly after the incident. Later, LWV acknowledged that not seeking medical attention for Rebecca wasn't oversight. I felt that the decision not to call a doctor for Rebecca on this occasion was irresponsible. I also questioned LWV about why police were not called. I was told that those procedures could not be discussed with me, but that it was not LWV's responsibility to contact police in these types of situations, although I could do so myself if I wanted to. LWV did arrange for some additional staffing for the house following the incident, but the program manager told me it could not be sustained long term and we needed to advocate for more support for Rebecca to be included in her NDIS plan. Not long after this, I learned that Katie had pushed Rebecca over and she fell on her head. This occurred despite there having been additional staff on following the previous incident. Once again, I was really upset and worried and contacted the Office of the Public Advocate to ask if action could be taken. LWV may have been taking measures to try to protect Rebecca, but they just were not working and it was really affecting Rebecca badly. I also made a complaint to the DSC in October, two thousand and eighteen. Rebecca's own behaviour changed. I was made aware that she spent a lot of time in her bedroom and she avoided the laundry, kitchen and common areas. She would also spend time pacing the hallway and exhibited signs of anxiety, including gritting her teeth. When I visited her and Katie was not there, Rebecca seemed happier, which I felt was significant. I was also told by support workers that she sometimes did not want to return to the Melbourne House from her day programme. In November, two thousand and eighteen, occupational therapy report for Rebecca noted that it was difficult to engage her in activities she had once enjoyed, like cooking due to the dynamics of the Melbourne House, including bullying. Another report by Rebecca's Positive Behaviour Support Practitioner in December, two thousand and eighteen, noted that her anxiety and antisocial behaviour had increased. Referred to Rebecca's limiting her participation in the house, becoming more aggressive, smearing her faeces. It also said there had been a decrease in staff support for implementation of Rebecca's Positive Behaviour Support Plan at the Melbourne House, but that she was settled and calm at her day placement. I would sometimes see bruises on Rebecca's body and was not sure how she had got them. Rebecca was also to communicate to me when she was hurt by her behaviour. For example, one day, when she came home from a visit, she walked through the door and repeatedly said, 'out', and took off her top to show me some bruises. I also recall an occasion in late two thousand and eighteen when I was suspicious about some serious bruises on Rebecca, which I was told were the result of a fall when she was getting out of the van. I asked the community business to look into it and it seemed strange that bruises were both to the back and the front of Rebecca's body. That further increased my fears about what might be going on in the house. After the September, two thousand and eighteen incidents, a discussion with one of the LWV managers and my complaint to the DSC, I understand that LWV developed some kind of safety plan for Rebecca. I do not recall whether I was provided with a copy of the plan, but I was pleased that LWV appeared to be taking some more proactive measures and I told the DSC that they could close their investigation of my complaint. The DSC did help me to get a response from LWV on this occasion, including an acknowledgement that their fantasy medical treatment for the wound on Rebecca's knee wasn't oversight. I also recall the DSC was helpful in arranging meetings with LWV, which provided some improvements, but they were short-term and didn't seem to last. I also told the DSC that after the September incidents, I had not received an apology from LWV and at a meeting a few days later, I did receive an apology. On the fourth of January, two thousand and nineteen, I received a letter from DSC setting out its findings. While the safety plan put in place some steps to ensure Rebecca had more support over the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen holiday period, I do not think that it really worked. I understand there was an incident in January, two thousand and nineteen, when Katie hit Rebecca in the face and Rebecca's own behaviours worsened. At this stage, I was totally overwhelmed and exhausted. My husband was very unwell and was in and out of hospital. Not long after, I remember there was an incident when Rebecca was accidentally given all of Robert's morning medications, one of which she was highly allergic to. This was very concerning to me because she had previously been taking that particular medication and had become very unwell and experienced dystonia as a result. Support workers at the Melbourne House told me about the incident, but when I asked if Rebecca had been Rebecca had been taken to the doctor, they said no. I asked them to take her to the doctor. In early April two thousand and nineteen, severe bruising was found on Rebecca's back. Rebecca, which includes an. Rebecca was taken to the doctors who was concerned there was blood force trauma, but not internal injuries were found from a scan. Initially, I was not given an explanation for what could have caused the bruising and I spoke to the program manager about it. I was told that LWB was looking into the matter. I contacted the Office of the Public Advocate and the DSC again because I was worried about what could have happened. Later LWB told me the bruising was a result of Rebecca having fallen over in her room. By this stage, I was so distressed and worried that I had had enough. The severe bruising found on Rebecca's body in April two thousand and nineteen made my decision for me and along with Rebecca's support coordinator, I began looking for somewhere else for her to live. I was of course worried about the potential impact of such a big disruption on Rebecca's on Rebecca, but her Positive Behaviour Support Practitioner also said in two thousand and nineteen, report that she needed a new and support environment. I remember my husband telling me just to bring her home, but I knew this was not the answer. The process was not easy and we had to talk to DHHS to identify housing alternatives, which was complicated by Rebecca's NDIS funding category. In April two thousand and nineteen, we had heard from DHHS that there was a place for her in another house, but that a reassessment of her SDA eligibility was required and she could not move until she was completed, until that was completed. When Rebecca finally left the Melbourne House in November two thousand and nineteen, I made sure to emphasise that I had been generally happy with the care provided by her support workers at the house. She had some wonderful relationships with several of the staff who supported her over the years at the Melbourne House. I spoke often with the staff at the house about my concerns, but I felt they could only do so much and they were not being well supported by their team leaders and managers who were constantly changing. I also felt that conflict and even violence in the Melbourne House had somehow become normal and had been accepted as a fact of life, rather than being something that should be addressed in a concerted, long-term and consultative, consultative manner involving the residents and those who love them and wanted the best for them. In addition, when there was a problem at the Melbourne House, I didn't always know the best person within LWB to direct my query to because it always seemed to be changing. So I often copied in more senior people on emails. I tried to speak to regional managers, but it seemed that the people in that role were changing often. Moved from the Melbourne House to new accommodation. Eventually, in November two thousand and nineteen, Rebecca was able to move into new shared accommodation run by Arilon. The transition from the Melbourne House was not an easy one for her. She was a lot younger than her co-residents in her new Arilon home, who were all over sixty. However, once she settled in, she did seem a lot happier. Then in June two thousand and twenty-one, she was able to leave the group home and move into a place by herself. She still has twenty-four seven support from Arilon, both in her home and at day placement. And it seemed to me this new arrangement suits her extremely well. I strongly believe that Rebecca's behaviours at the Melbourne House were an effort to tell everyone she was upset and scared. Since leaving the Melbourne House, Rebecca has not had any major problems. She has not been assaulted by anyone and has not had any injuries. I feel like I don't need to constantly check up on her and support staff and the management team responsible for her care like I needed to when she was at the Melbourne House. NDIS funding issues. I would also like to share my views in relation to trying to navigate the National Disability Insurance Scheme, the NDIS, funding system on behalf of Rebecca. I am Rebecca's plan nominee and I attend all planning meetings on behalf of Rebecca. I was hopeful when the NDIS was rolled out that it would really assist her in getting all the supports and services she needed, but without me constantly advocating for her and obtaining legal help to write letters and seek reviews, I do not think she would have had all the funding she required. Even with that considerable work, it was a long and difficult process. Rebecca's first NDIS plan in October two thousand and sixteen specified her funding for improved daily living, support coordination, transport and core supports. Prior to this, her ISP had included funding for her to attend her Arilon day programme for five days a week. This was one of the biggest problems from the outset with Rebecca's early NDIS plans. Rebecca's transport costs to and from the day programme were only partially funded through the NDIS. Two thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars was allocated, the transport in her NDIS plan, but Arilon provided a quote of three thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and four cents per annum. Rebecca cannot travel independently and needs a support worker to help her as she often removes her seatbelt. Prior to the introduction of the NDIS, there was no out-of-pocket expenses associated with Rebecca's transport under her ISP. The second issue was the funding Rebecca required for one-to-one individual assistance while at her day programme, which is also previously funded in her ISP. The National Disability Insurance Agency, the NDIA, classified Rebecca at the standard level of support needs. Arilon considered Rebecca to require a high intensity level of support, which included one-to-one assistance. Arilon stated this would ensure Rebecca's positive engagement, increase her wellbeing and confidence and give her choice and control over her life, all of which are considered essential. Without additional funding for one-to-one support, Rebecca could not participate in group activities at her day placement. It was very frustrating to have Rebecca's funding for these supports reduced. This meant that Rebecca could not participate in group activities at Arilon unless she used a funding that was needed for other social and recreational activities. It was essential that Rebecca both be able to attend her day placement at Arilon and be supported appropriately while she was there. This became increasingly important as tensions at the Melbourne House escalated and I viewed Arilon as an essential daily respite for her. I sought legal assistance for Rebecca and in May two thousand and eighteen, her legal representative wrote to the NDIA, seeking review of Rebecca's plan. In March and August two thousand and nineteen, conciliations between the NDIA and myself on behalf of Rebecca took place. Eventually, on sixteenth of August two thousand and nineteen, the Administrative Appeals Tribunal made a partial decision which increased the funding for Rebecca's transport and provided an additional twenty-four hours of funding for support coordination. Then, on sixteenth of December two thousand and nineteen, the NDIA's decision of twenty-first of August two thousand and eighteen was set aside and in addition to increased funding for transport and additional hours of support coordination, Rebecca was allocated seventy-five hours of behavioural support, thirty hours of occupational therapy, twenty hours of one-to-one support for when she came home from her day programme, twelve hours of speech therapy, eighty-five thousand one hundred and six dollars and ninety cents for her day programme and thirty-one hours per week for six weeks of the year for one-to-one day programme support during the holidays. The amount of funding Rebecca received in January two thousand and twenty-one plan has increased significantly from her first plan in two thousand and sixteen. I believe the funding Rebecca receives now is what she would have been receiving from, she should have been receiving from the beginning. Review process remained lengthy and time-consuming, but I have become savoury over them or savvy of them. The process I have described with the Administrative Appeals Tribunal above took almost three years. It was a long and difficult process, but it was worth it. Rebecca can now safely live by herself and she has a better quality of life, particularly due to the full-time one-to-one support. Conclusion. Making sure Rebecca is happy, safe and can achieve whatever she wishes to do has always been my priority. I'm so glad she finally is in a place where she has her independence, but also has the support she needs and is comfortable. It was a real challenge to get to that place. I remain concerned that other people with intellectual disability who may have behaviours of concern might not be as well supported as Rebecca now is. Fundamentally, I think we all have a right to choose the people with whom we live. I have friends who I love dearly, but that does not mean I would choose to live with them. It seems wrong to me that people with intellectual disability have to share their homes with people that may not know or with people who have complex behaviours of concern that cannot be fully addressed with which cause them distress or harm. Disability service providers that offer accommodation and support services must be able to find a way to ensure that everyone's individual personalities, ages and needs are fully taken into account and their preferences and choices are respected in all aspects of their lives.
Yes, I'm sure on behalf of the Commissioners, we wish to thank Catherine for making that statement and for providing it in that form. We're sorry that she was unable to give evidence directly to the Commission, but we of course have heard and in our case seen Rebecca give that statement.
Chair asks for a shorter adjournment after which Paul, one of the other parents of Robert in the Melbourne House, will appear and give his evidence.
All right, we'll resume at eleven forty Eastern daylight time. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed. Yes, Mr. Fogarty.
Yes, thanks Chair. The next witness is Paul, foster father of Robert, resident of the Melbourne House and the husband of Tanya, foster mother of Robert. Paul has provided a statement for this public hearing dated seventeenth November twenty twenty-one through reference. It's in Hearing Bundle B, Tab One and Attachments, Hearing Bundle B, Tabs eight to seventy-six.
Yes, thank you. Paul, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. We appreciate your attendance and the statement that you have provided. And just so you know where everybody is located, Commissioner Galbally is participating in the hearing from Melbourne. Commissioner McEwan is with me on my right in the Sydney Hearing Room, as of course I am, and Mr. Fogarty, who I will ask shortly to ask you some questions, is also in the Sydney Hearing Room. If you'll be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, he will administer the affirmation to you. Thank you very much.
I will read you the affirmation at the end. Please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, Paul. I'll now ask Mr. Fogarty to ask you some questions.
Paul, can I check you have a copy of your statement with you?
Yes.
All right. And can I also check there are no changes that you want to make to your statement?
No, there's none.
All right, and so you can confirm, can you, that the contents of your statement are true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
I can confirm that, yes.
Thank you, Paul. Paul, propose to work through your statement, starting firstly by asking you some questions that will help the Royal Commission and those listening and watching the live stream to understand better who Robert is, who his family is and clearly when one comes to the end of your statement and through your statement, how much he is loved and supported by his family and those around him. Robert's now thirty-seven years of age.
Correct.
He still lives in the Melbourne House.
He does, yes.
And what things or pastimes does Robert like doing?
He mainly likes going out with his day programme workers, going out, they normally go out and walk around a park, go and have coffee, they used to before Covid, go into the city and listen to the buskers. And he loves having a spa bath. He would have a spa bath every day of the week and that's probably his greatest pleasure in life. He likes food and he has a, he likes a wide range of styles of food. He knows various kinds of breads from Cassellina to Pano de Casa, so he's got excellent kind of tastes. He used to listen to a lot of music, but not so much now.
I understand he doesn't mind a beer as well.
Yes, he likes to have a beer. He's got one particular kind that he likes. I won't give anyway any free advertisements today.
Thanks, Paul. You've provided some photos to the Royal Commission that the Commissioners have seen or have access to. There are three that I'll refer to. One, just so the Commissioners understand, one is in his favourite chair at the Melbourne House.
That's right.
And another is with mum and dad on one of his birthdays at home.
That's correct, yes.
And another one is him preparing some food at the Melbourne House with his then key worker. That was a couple of years ago, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
All right. Can I ask you to tell the Royal Commission a little bit about his birth and early years? Very briefly?
Yeah, he was the fifth child of my wife's cousin. They were on a farm somewhere. And, well, he wasn't wanted from the start as my understanding of it. He was born very prematurely, had to have oxygen for his lungs, but that destroyed the retinas of his eyes and he was in hospital for a long time after birth and possibly that also attributed to his autistic issues and intellectual disability. We don't know about that. We realised that the family were in difficulty and we saw that he wasn't being looked after properly or as we thought. We offered to take him for a while to give the mother a break. He came to us when he was two, something, and they didn't want him back and we kept him.
And you formally adopted him yourself and Tanya?
No, we didn't adopt him. We got guardianship and something else, got a court order, but it wasn't adoption.
All right. And you mentioned some of the diagnoses of his disabilities. One is he's blind, is that correct?
Yes.
Another is he lives with, he's autistic?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
All right. And he also, in his twenties, developed epilepsy or had fits and seizures?
That's correct, yes.
And I note too, is it right that he, there was a diagnosis or a label given of developmental disability?
Yes.
All right. Some of his strengths, I understand, you talked about his love of music, which I think was more prominent when he was younger, that he has a very impressive memory as well. Is that right?
Yes, he has. The music was important when he lived with us, basically because of two boring elderly people. When he went to the house, I think because there's a lot more different people there, he likes to listen to what's going on at the house, so he doesn't listen to music as much. But before he learnt to talk at eight or before he started talking at eight, he had an incredible memory for music and he'd hum great slabs of classical music, including Jejeojoy, Man's Desiring, right through. But since he learnt to talk, stopped.
And now he communicates in what way now?
He can, he can talk and he understands much better than he can express his feelings. He doesn't express feelings very well. He talks in statements like ring up mum, ring up dad, more, more beer or whatever. He doesn't kind of engage in kind of much a long conversation.
I see. Mil Perinka is his day programme service provider, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And how long has he been engaged with them?
I can't remember, a long time. When, when he left school, he went to a couple of other service providers, it wasn't very successful and that probably. When, when he left school, he went to a couple of other service providers. It wasn't very successful and that probably was for about three or four years and then he went to Milperinka.
All right. If I, if I suggested two thousand and four, I'll, I'll help you on this one. Does that sound about right?
That'd be correct.
All right. Are they also these days involved in his NDIS support coordination?
They are, yes. They are, they are the support coordinator.
Okay. Just again, for the, for the benefit of understanding more about Robert, what, what support and assistance do you, do you say he needs from day to day, particularly in, in his accommodation?
Well, he needs assistance with showering and washing. He needs prompting for that. He needs assistance with meal preparation or needs people to prepare his meals. He needs assistance with dressing in so much as, you know, if someone needs to get the clothes out and the shoes out for him, they can put those things on. And he needs assistance in going out of the house. He needs one-to-one assistance because he's totally blind. Now, that's probably it.
All right. Prior to his move, and his move was in twenty eleven, is that right, to the Melbourne House?
Yes.
Prior to that, there was some in-home support services. Is that, is that the case?
That's correct, yes.
But is in my, as a summary from me, was that becoming more difficult, the, the interactions at home were becoming more difficult and, and you and Tanya decided that it would be good for all of you that, that he perhaps have his own separate accommodation? Is that, is that the backdrop?
That, that's correct. Both of us were on medication for depression. We were not coping. We were struggling and we got assistance from DHS after we said we might have to relinquish him. And that meant that all those people kept coming into our house, come in to shower him in the morning, to give him breakfast, come in to kind of work with him during the day. So we really never had a house to ourselves and, you know, you felt obliged to talk to them and make them cups of tea and things like that. And, yeah, we, we were just really struggling to that stage.
I see. And when you say that was the Department of Health and Human Services, the Victorian Department, is it then?
Victoria, yes.
All right. Did Robert or the family pick the Melbourne House in terms of where he went to?
We had a choice of two and the other was a lot further away. It was in, basically in the country.
I see. How far away is the Melbourne House from where you, you live now?
It's half an hour's drive.
All right. And when you say the offer was made, was that made by the department or someone else?
By the department.
All right.
That's my, my recollection of it.
All right. When, when Robert moved in, LWB was the service provider who managed the house in August twenty eleven?
That's correct, yes.
And do you recall, and I'll take you to a document, but do you recall whether there were contracts or agreements in place between Robert or yourself and Tanya and LWB? At that time?
When he, when he actually moved into the house, I don't think there was. Some, sometime later, I believe, we signed a document.
All right. And at the time, it was your understanding that the support services in, in the house were being paid through, was it through Robert's disability support pension or how was, how was that paid for at the time or, or through funding of the Victorian Department?
Well, money was taken out of his disability support pension, yes, for his rent and for, for his board.
All right. What were your impressions of the Melbourne House when, when you first went there?
We, we were very happy with it. We're happy with the fact that he was going to somewhere that was his. And we were quite impressed with the, the people that were running it and we thought this was going to be good.
And how did, how did, how did Robert appear to you? How did he seem with the, with the transition?
It took some time for him to be successfully transitioned in. He wasn't totally happy with the move.
I see. Robert moved in and was living with four other residents? That's the case?
That's the case, yes.
And they were, and these aren't their real names, but they were Stevie, Amanda, Rebecca and Marco?
That's correct, yeah.
So the house comprised of two, in, in total, two, two men and three women?
That's correct, yeah.
Right. Before Robert moved in, did, did he or you or the family have any say about who, who he'd be living with?
No.
All right. You, but did you, do you say that you had a choice or between two places, but the other place was further away in the country?
Well, we rejected on the fact that it was too far away for us to, to visit.
But in either case, were you aware of any of the other, that any of the other residents in either of those two, two places before Robert moved in?
No.
All right. Just very briefly, in your statement, you refer to an organisation called Active. Who did you understand Active were either then or as the years passed by?
Then we didn't really understand who they were. The only, only reason we knew of Active was because the, the workers, the, the staff would say, oh, you know, that's broken my, we've called Active to get it done. We thought Active were probably they had some kind of a lease from the house and they were a kind of disability support housing provider. And that rent was paid to Active and that Active were responsible for the maintenance of the house. But we never had any communication or don't, I can't recall any from Life Without Barriers or DHS informing us who this mythical Active were.
I see. But you understood LWB was providing the supports, the daily supports to, to Robert and other residents, not, not Active?
Not Active, no.
I see. All right. I'll ask you to be provided with a document and for reference, it's Hearing Bundle B, Tab Eleven. Asked you a moment ago about a contract. Do you have that in front of you?
I do, yes.
All right. Sorry if I didn't say Hearing Bundle B, Tab Eleven. It's a, you agree it's a residential statement from May twenty eleven? And it's signed, if you turn to page three, it's signed by an operations manager of Life Without Barriers. See that?
Yes, I do, yeah.
All right. What did, do you recall receiving and reading this document in twenty eleven?
It's very vague. I, I, I think we did, yeah.
All right. Did you have a concern about the document? And if you need to have a look at it now to refresh your memory, there's a few pages there and there's a bit of, there, there's a bit of detail in the pages after, but did you have a concern generally about what this document said or didn't say at the time?
No, we didn't have any concerns. We were very pleased that [BLEEP] was in a house and we wouldn't basically have signed anything.
I see. Can I fast forward you to twenty nineteen, just in terms of agreements or, or contracts and ask you to look at another document? It's Hearing Bundle B, Tab Twelve. Let me know, Paul, when you have that in front of you.
I have.
All right. You see on the front, it says Life Without Barriers, our agreement with you. And it's got client name, Robert, et cetera. Do you recall this more recent agreement?
I do, yes.
All right. And then by this stage, the NDIS funding was, was happening a couple of years in, correct?
Yes, yep.
In this, in looking at this document, did you have any concerns about this document and what it said or didn't say?
Well, we were concerned that it didn't actually spell out what the services that Life Without Barriers were going to provide to us were. It was pretty vague. We signed it just to so that we didn't have the angst with it, but it really didn't spell out what services we could expect from Life Without Barriers.
And is it fair to say by this time you'd been, one of the concerns, I'll call them, that you'd had with Life Without Barriers was, was essentially what was being provided or not being provided?
That was, that's correct, yes.
All right. Sorry to keep doing this to you, but I'll take you to another document. It's Hearing Bundle B, Tab Thirteen. You, you wrote, didn't you, to the State Director of LWB, and this is the letter, isn't it, of five August twenty nineteen, about service agreements?
That's correct, yes.
And I won't read right through it, but essentially in subheadings there, you set out your concerns with that State Director, don't you?
I do, yes.
Your concerns are in respect of transport, and I'm just capturing a couple of parts. There's no indication in the agreement as to what transport is being referred to or what are the charges. Below accommodation agreement, the document refers to an accommodation in agreement with LWB attached to the service agreement. This was not provided in the documentation given to us. You see that?
That's correct, yeah.
LWB charges is another heading of concern. The document does not specify your contribution to household expenses. Another concern, and this is one you were just giving some evidence about, subheading services to be provided. You write, as this is a service agreement, the document should list the services to be provided. There is a list of LWB responsibilities which seem appropriate, but the services should also be listed. And then underneath, you list with some subheadings the sorts of services that you understand at the time or understood at the time were being provided or, or to have been provided, is that right?
Or to have been provided, yes.
All right. Did you ever after that, from your recollection, August twenty nineteen, receive those details in an agreement that met those concerns from LWB?
My recollection is there was no response to that letter at all.
I see.
I don't, I don't recall receiving a reply to that letter.
Would you say that that service agreement is in worse shape in twenty nineteen than the agreement that you were provided with in twenty eleven?
I understand that question.
I withdraw that. Do, do you say that the details in the earlier twenty eleven statement, residential statement, are more fulsome? There's more detail in that earlier twenty eleven document than the twenty nineteen document. Do you agree?
I think that's correct, yes.
All right. I'd like, Paul, to move to another topic. You don't, you can put that document to the side.
So just before we leave that, Paul, what, what prompted you to write that letter specifically?
Well, we were not happy with the services provided by Life Without Barriers at the house. And we'd been asking for a long time for improvements. And maybe naively, I thought a service agreement order actually spell out what the services to be provided were in broad terms, because I felt that the document we'd signed was pretty worthless in terms of spelling out what we, what expectations were on them as far as the services that they were provided.
Thank you. And did you get any advice before sending that letter or was that something that you simply did on your own initiative?
I did it on my own initiative. I, I may have circulated it to the other guardians and parents of the house. I'd have to check on that, but I didn't get any advice from anyone else.
Thank you.
Paul, the topic I wanted to move to, and you set it out on, on page six of your statement, if, if you need to refer to it, is the topic where you talk about conflict and violence between residents in the Melbourne House. How did you come to know that there was conflict and resident, on resident violence in the house at the time?
At which, sorry, which time was that again?
Well, at any time. When did you become aware that there was, I'm using the terms conflict or, or violence between residents in the house, in, in the twelve, twenty eleven to twenty nineteen span?
We, we were aware that Stevie was very difficult, although Robert was okay that him [BLEEP] her out the back of the house and she didn't go out there very much. And what, what other guardians at the house? Let me, I'm trying to.
For example, for example, Paul, Catherine?
Catherine and Janine.
Yes.
We talked to them and they outlined some of the things that were happening to their, their children and siblings.
All right. Did you, you were visiting the, the house during that period of time, twenty eleven to twenty nineteen?
Yeah, we visited almost every week.
Yep. Did you observe any conflict or violence whenever you, at any time you were there? Do you recall?
I, I observed Stevie in a very agitated state in the face of workers and, and us, visitors. And, and I observed her using pretty bad language to the other residents.
All right. This is at page seven, and I appreciate it's a long time ago, but in, in twenty thirteen in July, this is paragraph thirty five, there was a family meeting with, with the program manager of the house about Stevie's compatibility. Do you recall that?
I do, yeah, vaguely.
Yeah.
Long time ago.
Do you recall also writing to the department about that as a problem?
I recall writing to the department, yes.
All right. Again, at the time, was it your understanding it was the department who had the say about, the final say about who, who would be a resident or who, who might be transitioned?
It was my understanding that was the department's responsibility, yeah.
All right.
And, and I'd never thought that residents had any say in it at all. I was wrong on that.
On page eight and paragraph thirty nine, you say, there's reference to a letter you sent to the CEO of LWB, Ms. Claire Robbs, on the twelfth of August twenty thirteen. Paragraph thirty nine, you, you see that? I just, part of what you said in that letter is your opinion, I think you wrote, was that LWB had breached its duty of care to the residents as well as to the support workers at the house by failing to eliminate the risks to their health and safety?
Yes.
Was part of your concern in respect of that around the violence and conflict?
Certainly was, yes. Violence between residents and violence towards the workers.
I see. Do you recall whether the, the CEO, Ms. Robbs, responded to your letter directly?
I can't recall, no.
All right. So we're now towards the second half of twenty thirteen. It's the case, isn't it, that in December of that year, the end of that year, Stevie moved out?
Yes.
When she moved out, again, you wrote to the department and I will ask for another document to be shown to you to assist you, because it is some time ago. It's Hearing Bundle B, Tab Twenty One.
I have it.
It's one-pageed. Have you got that, Paul?
I have, yeah.
That's a letter you wrote to the Department of Human Services, as you've said there, to the executive director. In this, you, you ask, don't you, for the families and other residents to have a say in the placement or the person who will replace Stevie, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
All right. And you talk in this letter, and I'll quote, "Given the degree of trauma experienced by some of the people connected with the Melbourne House, I imagine it will take some time for residents, guardians and staff to regain confidence and feel at ease in their own home." So it was, that, your statement there is about, it, it sounds as though it was quite a, a very difficult time for all of the people in that house from your observations and even the families. Is that so?
Certainly was, yes. It was traumatic.
Do the, do you recall, and sorry, one other thing, I note at the bottom, and you made some reference to that, you copy in some of the other family or the other family members?
Yes.
Is it, it's the case on this occasion that you were speaking not just for Robert, but for the other remaining residents?
Yes, uh, I guess more for the other residents, because I saw that, um, it was the females who were the ones who were, um, uh, in the firing line, so to speak, I don't think, um, [BLEEP] and Marco, uh, were on the receiving end as much.
I see.
We have no evidence.
In Rob, with, with respect to Robert?
Sorry, Robert.
It's Robert.
Sorry, Chuck. A, a little while ago, you referred to the experience as traumatic, could, could you just elaborate on that a little? What, in what way was it traumatic? Are you talking about from Robert's perspective, your perspective, both?
Uh, mainly from the perspective of the other residents, uh, the female residents, because I, I, I spoke to their, their parent and sibling and, uh, they were very distressed by it all, uh, and the fact that, uh, you know, when you went to the house, uh, Stevie was in your face and yelling at you and, uh, and, uh, I know Robert, um, was, uh, traumatised, um, he started ripping his, um, clothes, uh, and which is a sign that, um, he's, he's, um, very uh, anxious and, um, uh, wants something, you know, wants to express this anxiety in some way, uh, so, yeah, um, we were very upset by it and, uh, going to visit the house was, um, not the most pleasant experience at the time.
Hmm, yeah, thank you.
Uh, Paul, Katie moved in, uh, in early twenty fourteen, is that the case?
I believe that's the case, yes.
Um, did you or the other families, to your knowledge, have any say in her being placed there?
No.
All right, um, and Katie still lives at the Melbourne house?
She does, yes.
All right, um, and from your observations when she moved in, how did you see her as fitting in with the other residents? Did you think she did? Well, they, I should, I'll withdraw that. How was the atmosphere amongst all the residents with Katie moving in?
Well, um, we only visited once a week and, and I didn't observe any incidents involving Katie. Uh, and it seemed okay, um, but, um, uh, from what, um, uh, Catherine and Janine, uh, communicated to us, uh, there were serious issues that, um, we hadn't observed, uh, but, um, they were, but they were there.
And did it, but did they took, when you say what they passed on to you, was, was it more res, was it more resident on resident conflict?
Yes.
I see, all right, um. In your statement, and I won't take you through specifically except for one example, you give examples, I'm moving to a new topic now from page ten about your, the management of the house, particularly maintenance and upkeep. You give examples of a, a, an oven that was broken for some time, of, uh, requests for carpets to be cleaned and the cleanliness of the house. I'm going to be very general here, uh, and, and the spa bath having been broken. I'll come back to that, but in general terms, over, again, over the span, you, you may remember better more into the twenty nineteen's and the twenty eleven's, but what would you say about your requests or the other families' requests in terms of maintenance, cleanliness and upkeep?
Well, they, they took a long time to be actioned, um, we had to keep, uh, pressing them to, to take action. And, uh, we seemed to get a lot of, uh, excuses, uh, uh, for inaction, um. Uh, but things, things didn't get fixed as they should have.
And when you say they, who did you, who did you raise your requests or issues with?
I raised it with the senior, more senior management.
I see.
I'll fly for that barriers.
All right. Um, the spa bath too was, as you've explained, is something that, uh, Robert enjoys. Um, as I understand it, it has a calming effect on him?
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
So, so the period.
Obsessed with baths.
So the period of time that that was broken, and I understand there was a, a break in twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen, um, he went without that experience for that, that period of time, correct?
That's correct, yes.
I see, all right. I'd like to, uh, explore, continue to explore the, I'll use the word relationship, it may not be the right one, but how well or poorly the communication lines were between you and the other families, uh, that you observed in L W B. Um, and I'm moving closer to the present, into twenty seventeen. Um. At that time, how would you describe the, firstly, let's talk about how would you describe your relationship or, or how you, how you, how you engage with the disability support workers when you attended the house, how did you find that interaction?
That was good, yeah, we had, um, a lot of, uh, faith and, um, we thought that they were supportive and they did, uh, the best that they could do, given the situation, um, that we, I don't think, there, there would have been a one or two who we were not totally satisfied with, but in the main, the, um, support workers at the house tried very hard to, uh, deliver a good service to the, the residents.
Do you think they were supported from your observations by L W B management? Or couldn't, was that not something you could comment on?
I couldn't really comment on it, but, um, I don't think they were.
All right, um, what about your communication or contact or relationship with, uh, program managers, house leaders and working up to operations managers? How did you, we're talking twenty seventeen through to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, how was? How did you find that? Was it fruitful? Did things get done? Was it not fruitful? What, what, how would you describe it to the Royal Commission?
My, well, we had a civil relationship with them, uh, there's no, uh, kind of animosity or, uh, anger, uh, between us and the, the program managers and we put to them, uh, what we thought were our concerns and, uh, usually they would agree, but, uh, you know, things didn't get, uh, addressed.
And was there variation in between the different managers that came through, did you find?
Yeah, there was, uh, th- these are the program managers, yeah.
Yes, talking about program managers.
Yeah, one of them only lasted a very short time, another one who we thought, uh, was doing a really good job, disappeared off the face of the earth, uh, yeah, there was a wide range of, um, skills and abilities and, uh, interpersonal, uh, skills with the, the program managers.
Were you and the families, um, given any notice about, obviously you can't give notice in all cases because employees might just leave very suddenly, but was there any communication from higher up the chain to the families about that?
There was communication when, um, mostly, I think, when a new program manager was appointed.
I see.
Um, on a number of occasions, we, I, uh, emailed the, uh, Victorian manager, asking, you know, what had happened to this particular person, uh, and.
All right, um, and so what happened when you emailed asking that question?
I got replies to the effect that T or she, or I think it was mainly she's, uh, had moved on to bigger things and they had great interest in this and there was, you know, great career opportunities somewhere else for them and, you know, Life Without Barriers supports this, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, we, we only employ the best people and, you know, they go on to all these other things, but, yeah, those excuses.
I can think still in the latter stages, twenty seventeen through to twenty nineteen, were there, were there family meetings that were convened?
Uh, they.
With L W B?
It, it wasn't so much L W B convened and then, um, the, the guardians and, um, parents asked for the family meetings.
So it wasn't prompted, you say it wasn't prompted regularly by L W B or at all?
It may have been, uh, on occasions, but from my recollection in the main, it was, um, the parents who said they wanted to have a family meeting.
All right, um, uh, in July twenty nineteen, and this is at page fifteen of your statement, par, paragraph seventy. Um.
Page fifteen.
Let you get to page fifteen and paragraphs seventy, it's, it's about a, a communication protocol. You, uh, provided a, a two-page proposed procedure document for communication and consultations with families to L W B?
Yes, I did.
Uh, and, and here might be the time, what's, what's your background and career, Paul, if it can assist the Royal Commission?
Um, well, I started as an engineer, I was a teacher, and I, I had a reasonably senior position in WorkSafe. And then I had a consultancy business in occupational health and safety, um, where I, a, a lot of it involved writing, uh, occupational health and safety management systems for large organisations, so setting out, uh, the kind of processes that they needed to have to, uh, assist them to comply with the legislation.
And in this, do you recall this, this protocol, were you, were you following those sorts of structures that you'd learned in this protocol or applied?
Yes, yeah.
Um, do you recall whether, uh, it was taken up, that protocol by L W B?
I recall that it wasn't.
Was there any other protocol that you recall that L W B provided?
No.
All right.
You say in paragraph seventy, Paul, that, uh, you had become more frustrated with L W B's communication approach by July two thousand and nineteen. What, uh, were the sources of the frustration that you've expressed in that paragraph?
Just have to read the, the paragraph again.
Yeah, just the, at the beginning of the paragraph.
Well, um, around that, that time, we had a, um, a house supervisor who, um, kept making excuses about not, uh, attending the, um, any family meetings, she never attended one family meeting. Um, it just, it, it seemed to be just haphazard, uh, that seemed to be that, um, the families had to keep asking for them, uh, and we'd quite often arrange a, a time for it and, uh, that time would be changed, I recall in one instance, uh, where the, the time was changed so we could, um, meet and greet the, um, the new, uh, uh, Victorian manager, I think it was. And, uh, when we went to the meeting, the, um, program manager started the meeting off and we said, uh, we thought the, um, original manager was going to be here and she said, oh, do you want her or something like that, she went and got her. And, uh, she sat in the meeting and didn't say anything and, uh, and that was a kind of example of the, the, uh, interest they had in meeting with the families.
Paul, can I move to, uh, the commencement of the N D I S? It's, uh, again, covered at the bottom of your page fifteen and goes on to page eighteen. Um, June twenty sixteen was when the N D I S was coming into being in Victoria. Um, who was Robert's, uh, very first support coordinator for the planning, do you recall?
Um, I'm confused about the name, it was a woman from, uh, Life Without Barriers.
So, sorry, which organisation, most, I'm sorry, I should have said, it was, it was Life Without Barriers, was it?
Yeah, well, um, I mean, we didn't know what a support coordinator was at that time.
Yeah.
Uh, and, um, we found out the Life Without Barriers was the support coordinator.
Did you, did you have a say in that, do you recall at the time?
No, I don't think we did, no.
All right.
It was one of those things that happened at that time.
Um, at the time in twenty sixteen or the latter half, did you try to, wha- what did you understand about the N D I S? Might be difficult now, given you, you're almost an encyclopedia, it would seem, but take, taking yourself back to then, what, what did you know and how much did you know?
Um.
About what?
About the N D I S and the, and the funding that was.
Right.
The funding process.
I, I must say, I didn't, I, I knew i- i- in the principles of it, uh, the detail of the funding process I was not aware of, but, um, uh, [BLEEP]. Robert's, um, uh, day program, Mil, Milparinka, uh, seconded a worker to assist families with the, the preparation for the, uh, N D I S. And we were one of the first, I think, because, um, uh, we were in the first tranche of, um, of, uh, uh, municipalities. Um, so we went through a detailed N D I S workbook and got a lot of information together. Uh, and we knew about that and we knew that there'd be, um, uh, a plan, a planning meeting to, um, discuss the plan and, um, yeah, that.
That's what you understood, the workbook, you filled that out, did that, were you able to submit that to anyone?
No.
All right, um, and the planning meeting, I'm still talking about the initial, the initial first plan, as we'll call it, which I think was approved in October twenty sixteen, did you have a planning meeting?
No.
What, um, what information did you pass on advertently or inadvertently?
It was inadvertently, um, my wife had a phone call, um, in which, uh, they asked her a number of questions, she thought it was just N D I A collecting, uh, background information, which she, um, willingly gave them, um, and that was it, the sum total of it.
Um, and then is it fair to say, lo and behold, in early October twenty sixteen, you received, or Robert received, uh, his first N D I S plan?
That's correct, yes.
All right, um, show you, uh, a document and it's the plan, I think it's two documents, uh, certainly the references I have, it's in hearing bundle B, tab thirty one and hearing bundle B, tab thirty two. But together they comprise, I think, that correspondence of the first plan. Do you have that in front of you, Paul?
I do.
Just if you can go to page, uh, bottom right-hand corner, two of five.
Yes.
Um, this is the about me part.
Yeah.
Uh, you see, there's about half a page worth covering where I live and the people who support me in my daily life.
Yes.
Uh, I won't go through that, but what I'll do is, well, I'll come to the November twenty sixteen plan and ask you to reflect on what's in this and then what's in the next plan. Um, the next page is my goals. See that?
Yes.
And I will read through those, the first one is, is my first goal during this plan to receive the ongoing supports that I need to enable me to participate in activities during the weekend, on the weekend that interest me. Any, do you have any comment about that?
Sorry, what, what are you asking, in what sense you asking, Paul?
Well, do, do you, do you recall, uh, I understand you were present when Tanya took the call, but do you recall being asked? Oh, I was, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, do you recall either afterwards speaking to Tanya or any contact you had with the N D I S or N D I A, I should say, about s- these specified goals in this first plan?
I don't recall it, no.
All right, and the second goal during this plan to receive ongoing support from allied health professionals for assessment and recommendations in relation to equipment, aids or apps that may assist me? You don't recall whether that was something specific put, put to the N D I A by you or Tanya?
I don't recall, no.
All right, and then my longer term goals underneath that and aspirations are goal, ongoing maintenance, servicing and replacement of, uh, Robert's vehicle when required. Um, is it the case that, that you and Tanya had provided a van or a vehicle for Robert at, at the Melbourne house?
That's correct, yes.
All right. The next page starts, uh, is part three, my supports. And there's a number of support areas, assistive technology. And this is the second document in the hearing bundle, and improved daily living, home modifications, support coordination, it's transport, core supports. Um, when the family, when you, Robert, received the document, were, were there concerns you had about the funding that had been approved?
Uh, well, we just didn't know what, what, um, what the funding was, uh, going to run to in terms of, you know, what services he could get from that amount of funding. Uh, we were a bit totally confused, really, uh, you know, we just wanted to continue on as, as things were. And, um, there was a clause, I kept saying in the, some of the information sessions we went to about no disadvantage, no disadvantage. So we thought, we thought, well, maybe that's, that's what it is, it was only when we sent the, um, the plan to, uh, the C E O at Milparinka and he started to go through the, the sums and started to get, have serious concerns about, um, whether, uh, they could provide a service.
Um, it's a case, there was an issue around transport fees, wasn't there, or payment?
Yes, yeah.
And did that result in, in Robert not being able to attend Milparinka?
That's correct, yeah, um, the, uh, Milparinka had been, uh, subsidising to some extent previously before N D I S. The, the fact that workers had to now go out to his, his northern metropolitan house, which was a, a half hour's journey or so. And they'd been subsidising that. Um, but, uh, they couldn't continue doing that forever. And, uh, the amount that, um, was included in the pla- plan for his, uh, day programme was just, just not enough. And they were going to go broke.
And so is it the cut? Sorry.
Oh, in the end I had to say, look, um, we're sorry, but, um, we, we're going to have to withdraw our services because we just can't, can't pay the workers.
Um, he didn't attend for a couple of months, is that right? That is Robert?
That's, that's correct, yeah. Extremely traumatic time for, for us and for a lot of other people, including his, these, uh, Milparinka workers. One of whom went out to say goodbye to him and was apparently in tears.
All right. Um, you then, uh, complained or took it up with the N D I A?
I tried to, yes, yeah.
Um, and then in November twenty sixteen, um, a, a second plan came along after you had uh, been contacted by an N D I A or N D I S planner, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
All right. Um, Chair, I note the time, perhaps a short break, my assist.
Yes, I, I think it, that perhaps might assist also if we moved on a bit chronologically. This, this is dealing, is it not, with the time just after the N D I S comes into effect?
Yes.
And I, 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 I think we understand, uh, from both the statement of the documents, the difficulties that were experienced with the initial plan. Uh, it might be helpful if we moved on a little bit towards the current circumstance.
All right, thank you, Chair.
All right, well, we'll take a, uh, how long do you want to have a break for?
Uh, perhaps, Paul, is five minutes enough just to give you a break?
All right, well, it's nearly twenty-five to one. We'll resume at twenty to one.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. Royal Commission is resumed. Yes, Mr. Fogan.
Thanks, Chair. Paul, I don't want to spend too long on it, but it, because I understand that the SIL quote process in twenty nineteen was, uh, quite an epic drama for yourself and Robert. Uh, is it the case that, and qualify this if I haven't captured it correctly, but that in early twenty nineteen, January twenty nineteen, you uh, with, I think, Milparinka by this stage, uh, we're a lot, we're, we're needing a SIL quote to assist uh, in the planning process. And that SIL quote coming from L W B to ensure that, uh, Robert's next plan for the year ahead, um, could be finalised, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Is it the case that, sorry, Paul?
The SIL quote has got to be included in the plan, my understanding of it.
Initially, about when was that, was that due in that year in twenty nineteen? Quite early on?
Yes, yeah. Um, well, it was due in, I think we went to a meeting with the N D I A in, uh, January. And, uh, and they typed into computer and said, uh, we haven't received a SIL quote from Life Without Barriers.
You then.
Sorry.
You then followed up with Life Without Barriers for many months, didn't you?
I did, yes.
And to your recollection, was it not until November twenty nineteen that you became aware that the N D I A had the right document in terms of a SIL quote?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Eleven months later, and then do you recall that in January twenty twenty, the N D I A approved the next plan, including the SIL quote?
That's correct, yes.
Sorry, is, is that intended to convey that there was a delay due to L W B or?
That's so.
I think that it might help if you explain that specifically through Paul.
So, Paul, the SIL quote process is, is a process that relies on information and, and these days a roster of care that's put together by the supported independent living provider, in this case L W B, is that right?
Yes.
And this is in a group, group context setting?
That's correct, yeah. And that, that SIL quote then goes into the individual's plan.
And the N D I A reviewed that with the, with the proposed plan and information that's been inputted, is that right?
I assume so, yes.
Yes. Um, and it's a case, isn't it, that the N D I A can't do its job, finish its job with the plan until it has the right SIL quote and these days roster of care that, that goes into that process? Is that what you understand?
Yeah, that's my understanding of it.
And, long story short, the N D I A in this case couldn't do their job and finalise Robert's plan for approximately eleven months after what'd been the original due date because of L W B, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
What, what were you asking L W B to do that they didn't do?
We were asking to put in a SIL quote. Uh, and, um, they, they put it in and then it be rejected by, uh, N D I A. Uh, they, they didn't consult with us and the N D I A were, um, not happy with that because one of the requirements is in preparation of a SIL quote that, um, the provider must consult with the participant. And we didn't have that. It just went backwards and forwards between, uh, Life Without Barriers and N D I A.
Did N D I A tell you why they had rejected, uh, SIL quotes provided by L W B?
I don't believe they actually told us. They just said that, then we are waiting, uh, Life Without Barriers to submit a updated SIL quote or something like that, but we never actually had the reason for it.
What was L W B's explanation when you contacted them?
Um, I don't think they really, they had an explanation that, uh, that was that, um, this particular person had gone off and leave or something like that. Uh, the, the SIL quote was being prepared in Newcastle. Uh, Robert, um, is in Victoria and was being prepared by someone in Newcastle who really didn't know uh, what Robert, um, required in terms of, um, his care, level of care. Uh, and so there was a lot of backwards and forwards between internally, I imagine with Life Without Barriers and between, um, the N D I A and, uh, Life Without Barriers. But, um, we were sitting on the outside.
Thank you. Paul, as well, just in, in that, uh, process, wasn't it the case in April that the program manager emailed you and said that they'd finalised the quote and that if you needed to put any more input in, you could? And in fact, you later found out that by the time you'd sent that email, they'd already submitted it to the N D I A?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
In November twenty nineteen, uh, Rebecca moved out of the Melbourne House? Yes. Um, you, uh, again raised with L W B a request for the family, families to be involved in choosing the next resident, is that right?
I did, yes.
You also spoke with the department and the then Minister for Disability, you, you corresponded with them about that choice?
I did.
Yes. Um, and what did you find out when you spoke with the department on this occasion?
So you mean the Victorian?
The Victorian Department, yes.
Yeah, the, the H H S as it was then, I think. Um, I ev- I eventually found, uh, the person in the department who was responsible for placements. And I explained the situation to him and he said to me, I've been waiting for this phone call. Uh, when I was in shared accommodation, it was the people who lived in the house, uh, made the choice about the new residents. And I don't see what's different with, um, with, uh, people with disabilities. Uh, and, um, I then, um, asked that the, um, the placement be put on hold until the, uh, the new provider, uh, took over. And, uh, they informally agreed to that. I, I think the person in the department was a bit reluctant to, um, put it on an email, but, uh, he, he agreed to it.
All right. And so at this stage, November twenty nineteen, you and the other families were, what, what had been and were still talking about, and you tell me if the decision had already been made, changing supported independent living provider, so replacing L W B, is that right?
Yeah, I believe at that stage we'd made the decision, yeah.
All right. Um, very quickly, how did you come to know that that was something you could ask for or demand? Do you recall?
What, that we could get a new SIL provider?
Yes.
Uh, I just read through the policies, et cetera, of the N D I A and read through the act and tried to find it out.
Self-education?
Yeah.
Right. Um, nowadays, Araluan is the SIL provider, correct?
Correct.
Um, and they formally took over on one November twenty twenty?
Yes.
So there was, do you agree, and I'll, I'll come to it, in December twenty nineteen, you met with them, didn't you? So virtually a year before.
Yes.
Um, and you provided to them, and it's probably the last document I want to ask you to be shown a copy of. You provided a statement of concerns regarding the management of the S D A house at the Melbourne address. It's document, uh, Hearing Bundle B, Tab sixty-three. Let me know, do you have that in front of you, Paul?
I've got it in front of me.
All right. What?
Yeah.
That document was prepared by you?
It was, yes.
Uh, was it in consultation with the other families at the time, do you recall?
I believe it was, yes. I, I tried as ha- as hard as I could to, um, involve all the other families in, in, uh, making the decision and in, uh, you know, what we were communicating to, um, Araluan and to Life Without Barriers.
And you provided this to Araluan and essentially wanted to know what their responses are, would be to those concerns, is that right?
That's correct.
If I can take you to some of these concerns, and I won't just read through them, but, uh, but I would, uh, would you agree this is a fairly important document in the scheme of a summary of the experience, certainly of Robert and you with L W B in the Melbourne House over the years twenty eleven to twenty nineteen?
Oh, you're correct with that.
All right. You turn to the second page, which has bullet points. And the third page, three of five down on the bottom right, has more bullet points. I count forty-six concerns or issues in those bullet points. But maths was never my strongest suit. The topics, some of the topics or concerns, you agree, uh, the second bullet point, failure to adequately address and prevent physical and verbal abuse of two residents by another resident, you see that?
Yes.
Two down, medication being given to the wrong person. Yes?
Yes.
Then inadequate house cleaning routines and poor house cleanliness. Further down, broken equipment is not replaced.
I can't find it, but, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping around a bit, but let me know. Yep, halfway down.
Yeah.
Underneath that, apparent fa- failures of the incident reporting system.
Yes.
Underneath that, responsible person's not being informed of incidents.
Yes.
Uh, about five down, and I'm not taking you to, to you to your N D I S or N D I A complaint that ended up going to the commission, but there's one there that says residents' money used inappropriately for purchases of fast food, you see that, et cetera?
Yes.
That's a topic you took up, wasn't it, by way of complaint to the N D I A later on, November twenty twenty?
Yes, I took it up, um, with the N D I A.
And then that went across to the, the commission, all right?
Yes. But, um, it, this issue had been raised by, uh, the sibling of another resident and, um, I believe by, uh, Catherine, uh, quite some time before this.
All right. Then over the page, Paul, just read a couple more. Uh, the top bullet point, excessive use of agency staff. You see that?
Yes.
Underneath, high turnover of management and house supervisors.
Yes.
And underneath that, assurances from management regarding future improvements in services, et cetera, never eventuate.
Yes.
Have you got a question for Paul on these or?
No, I just wanted to, I'm taking him there in terms of saying, uh, my last, my, my, my question, Chair, is that, that list that you've written in, in December twenty nineteen, um, are those concerns that are listed, concerns that span twenty eleven to twenty nineteen? Would you, and, and secondly, i- if you can't answer that or you say it's too generic, um, uh, was there an improvement? Have you seen improvement, significant improvement between twenty eleven and twenty nineteen in respect of any of these concerns with L W B?
No, not really, no.
Excuse me, could I ask a question? Um, I'm interested in, uh, the one about families not feeling welcome in the house. Um, and I ask that because of the role families play in observing what's going on and advocating when things aren't going well, Allah, what you, you've been doing. Can you describe that a bit more, that you weren't made to feel welcome?
Yeah, um, this related to a, a recent, uh, house supervisor who, um, when we visited, uh, never came out of the office. Um, she maybe sent a few emails, but that was the major communication we had with her. We'd go there on a Sunday afternoon, she'd be sitting in the office and she, she never came out. She never said, you know, how's things going? Uh, uh, one time, um, uh, had to go to the dentist and, um, his, um, day programming worker and myself took him, uh, when you're blind and, uh, got intellectual disabilities and you ask, open your mouth and a dentist, sure, it's a bit, um, a daunting situation. Anyhow, we got through, fine. We got back and she was, we, we drove up, uh, we're getting him out of the car and she was there. And I said, hi, how's it going, something? She said, good, and just walked into the office, uh, sat down and that was it. Never, never came out again. Uh, so, yeah, we didn't feel that, um, uh, we were welcomed, uh, by that person.
Right, but you weren't stopped, you weren't discouraged?
Uh, discouraged, I was disappointed, uh, but, no, it takes a bit more to discourage me.
Thank you.
Paul, um, as you've given evidence, Araluan has, uh, been the SIL provider since November twenty twenty. How would you describe, uh, the last year in a bit? How's it been for, for Robert?
Well, um, the COVID situation intervened and that made things, uh, difficult because, uh, Robert had to stay in the house, uh, because there was no day programme. But he managed, um, pretty well. Uh, and the foods incre- uh, food, um, uh, standard quality has improved. There's kind of, uh, uh, a programme each, each week with what food, uh, is going to be had for the week. We take a photo of it so we can talk to him on the phone about it when he rings up. Uh, yeah, the, the cleanliness has improved, although there's still issues that have got to be done by, uh, kind of specialist, uh, repair people, but, um, they're on the go. Uh, there are still some issues that probably need to be addressed, that, um, the staffing situation, unfortunately, there were some issues with, um, with the, uh, the staff who came across from, uh, Life Without Barriers. And there was some, some issues with bullying and, um, uh, Araluan had to stand, uh, three people down and that meant that, you know, some of the, uh, staff who knew the clients, um, were no longer there, but that's now, now been sorted out.
What about communication between you and the family and Araluan management? Is that, is that better than it used to be with L W B?
Yeah, um, yeah, it's fine. Um, we'll just bring up the, uh, I'm not too sure what, what, um, her position is. She's in charge of, um, uh, accommodation there. If there's an issue, we haven't had many, and I guess we've been trying to, uh, give them a bit of a go because of the, the kind of issues with COVID and the fact that that's, um, put a lot of stress on the operations. Uh, but, um, no, the, the communication's fine, um, yeah.
All right. The last top topic, Paul, I wanted to take you to before I hand to the commis- commissioners for any additional questions is you, you list towards the end of your statement, some systemic issues of concern and I think some suggestions to change. The, the first one is external monitoring and the importance of advocacy. You're saying in your statement, uh, and this is a quote, it's a short quote, so I don't think you need to read it, but there needs to be more proactive monitoring of the standard of disability service delivery and management by SIL providers. Do you feel that the N D I, N D I S Quali and Standards Commission fulfills that role? In your experience?
I have no evidence of that at all.
All right. Um, do, do you have any suggestions around how this situation might be improved?
I have a lot of suggestions. I have a lot of suggestions.
Do we have a couple of ours?
Yes. Well, I, I, I think the N D I S Quality and Safeguards Commission needs to have a much stronger enforcement role. Uh, they need to revise their practice standards so that they are, uh, they actually define what the, um, what the, uh, providers got to do in terms of managing their responsibilities. At the moment, the practice standards really talk about the outcomes that are expected for the, the participants, but, uh, they don't actually say what the, um, the providers have got to do in terms of having a system to manage the organisation and deliver those, um, services. Uh, so, yeah, I, I, I think, you know, a- a- as an ex-manager of WorkSafe, um, now, I, I would like to see a more, uh, robust, uh, enforcement, uh, uh, capability, uh, where, where, um, you know, they can issue, uh, improvement notices or, uh, cease, cease operation notices, but, uh, a- at the moment, it seems to me very wishy-washy.
Thank you. The second topic you talk about is choice and control, or probably better put, absence of choice and control. You say for a long time it didn't feel like Robert had any choice or any control, even after the introduction of the N D I S. Um, has that, do you think that's improved, maybe with the new SIL provider, or do you still see gaps or problems in terms of Robert's choice and control?
Um, no, I think to the, uh, ability of choice that he has, I think, um, uh, that's, it's working now, yeah. Uh, and I think they make efforts to, um, to try and, um, deliver what he's asking. Sometimes it's hard to, uh, work out what it is that he's asking for. Uh, but, um, you know, I think they are making those efforts, yeah.
And when you say they, you mean his SIL provider?
Yeah, Ara Luin, yeah.
What about the, what about N D I A and the funding it provides? Do you think the funding now for Robert empowers him in a sense to have choice and control around the various areas that are funded?
I believe it does now, yes.
All right. The last topic you refer to, uh, in terms of systemic concerns is, is disadvantages of large multi-state service providers. Uh, you say, and it's at page thirty-one, paragraph fifty-five, our experience working with a large organisation with its headquarters in another state raises a question for me about whether SIL services can be effectively delivered in this manner. Um, speaks for itself, I suppose, but is, is Ara Luin, to your knowledge, a, a smaller model, or is it still a big o- organisation? Because it sounds like, to a degree, the communication, at least communication's better with that organisation.
It is, um, I'm not too sure, I think it's, Ara Luin's got about a hundred and twenty employees, something like that. I'm not, I think they've probably got six houses, uh, at the very most, uh, a- as opposed to Life Without Barriers who had, you know, thousands of employees and they're headquartered in New South Wales, in Newcastle, uh, you know, much easier to, to go out and talk to them.
And in, in a sense, is it really that you're saying that, I think you gave an example earlier about SIL quote being done by a person in Newcastle. I think from your statement, you say who'd never met Robert, that, that 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 disconnect means, I might be putting words in your mouth, but tell me if, if I'm wrong, means the service that's being provided either relies on a chain of communication to the head office that's accurate, um, or relies on assumptions by someone who hasn't met the person, and so the services may, in that situation, not as, not be as catered or as tailored, do you agree with that?
That's, that's correct, and when Ara Lu- Luin took over, they asked for the SIL quotes to be revised. And that took some time with N D I A, unfortunately, uh, and that was also part of the holdup. But, um, Ri- uh, Robert, um, got, uh, I think, an, an additional hour in the morning, uh, one-to-one for someone to help him get up, get dressed, to have his breakfast, and now that wasn't on the, um, on the SIL quote previously, uh, the rest of his SIL quote was pretty good.
This is the most recent, or the one that passed across from L W B to Ara Luin?
The one that passed across from L W B to Ara Luin didn't have, um, any provision for someone to help him in the morning, so in the morning, it might have been two workers for five people, uh, uh, Ara Luin wanted one, one-to-one for, uh, for, I think it's one hour, uh, in the morning, so that someone to get him up, to help him shower, get his breakfast, et cetera.
All right. Um, those are the questions I wanted to put to you is, I'll hand that, uh, well, sure, I'll ask you this, is there anything in addition that you wanted to say to the Royal Commission before I hand to the Commissioners?
No, except, thank you, thanks, thanks for the opportunity to tell, um, Robert and, uh, the other resident's story and, uh, I look forward to a, a, a good report from the, um, the Commission.
Thank you, Paul. I'll ask First Commissioner McEwan if he has any questions.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Just one question from me, uh, Paul, thank you. I want to understand just a little bit better, but briefly from you, when you responded to question from Mr Fogarty about the current situation, and you say in your last page that, of your statement, that you and Tanya won't be around, you know, um, of to look for Robert, you know, in, into the future, just tell me briefly, how confident are you right now that, that uh, Robert will continue to get the support that you want to see him get?
Well, I'm more confident, uh, than I was previously, uh, you know, there are still things that I would like to see Ara Luin do. Uh, but I'm much more confident, uh, and, you know, there, there seems to be stable staffing and a stable management at, uh, the organisation and that, that's a, a good sign.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Gelber.
Um, yes, I was, your, your story of changing SIL providers and you're savvy in going out and finding another one and getting the families together. You say in your statement that that's not, you don't think that happens very often. Uh, yet that's a really important freedom now to have. What do you think might improve that so that families could change their SIL providers right across Australia? What needs to be done, do you think?
I, I really haven't given that a lot of thought, I, I guess, I guess, uh, more education about the fact that, um, you, you can do this, that, that this is, this is your right.
Yeah. Um, my second question is, you, in your statement, paragraph one hundred and fifty, you talk about support coordination and you sort of imply that you didn't think it was independent when it was provided by L W B at least, and you again, did you arrange to change the support coordinator? To a Mar- Mar- yeah, you did, yeah.
We did, um, when, uh, his first, Robert got his first plan, um, we were, as I say, shattered, totally shattered by the plan, uh, we were distraught, um, and this person called a support coordinator, came to talk to us, uh, and we naively thought that maybe they would support us, and she told us to accept the plan. Uh, and then we started finding out about what a support coordinator was supposed to do, and we realised that it was our choice of who the support coordinator was, and so we immediately asked that, um, uh, Mil Perinka, who we had faith in, uh, although there's a potential conflict of interest there, we had faith, um, that they at least, um, had given it, support, Robert a lot of support previously, and, uh, in this situ- situation, they would do it.
Are the, in terms of the L W B support coordinator, you felt the conflict of interest was telling you to accept the plan, that was, um, the, the problem, that it was a conflict of interest?
I don't know, that it was a conflict of interest, it was just, um, just, don't, don't cause any fuss, just, um, accept it and let's get on with life and, um, yeah. The, the other issue i- in relation to su- support coordination is that, um, Life Without Barriers, uh, were the support coordinators for a couple of the other residents of the house. I attended one of the, um, N D I S planning meetings that the, um, that Life Without Barriers was a support coordinator for, and the, the planner started to go through last year's plan, asking what had been achieved, what had been done, and the answer was nothing, not one thing, and, um, that organisation is getting paid an amount of money for support coordination, which they didn't provide.
Yeah. Um, my third question was about advocacy, where you talk about how hard it would be for people in group homes who have no families or, you know, other loved ones to advocate. Um, did you, did Life Without Barriers encourage independent advocacy services to come in and assist people, assist families? Did you ever see them in there or hear about them?
Uh, not, not in relation to us and Robert, um, I, I can't speak for the other, other residents.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Paul, in your, uh, statement, there's a document that relates to the meeting that was held on the le- the eleventh of December two thousand and nineteen uh, with Ara Luin and, uh, I think with, uh, some of the parents. And in that doc- that document includes a draft, uh, a, a response by Ara Luin to a number of points that you raised. Um, how significant was that for you as you moved from Life Without Barriers to Ara Luin? Was that something that you regarded as important and has it played a part in your being able to monitor what Ara Luin is doing?
Their responses?
Yes.
Yeah, that was, um, very important. Uh, we not only, not only looked at that, we also, um, rang around and asked amongst the sector, you know, what kind of a reputation the organisation had. Uh, so, you know, we didn't just go on that, but that was very important.
And have you be a, have you been able to use that as a kind of checklist with, uh, Ara Luin services?
I must admit, I haven't done that yet, no.
Might be a good idea.
It, it, it would be, yeah, and the, the COVID situation kind of intervened and, uh, and there's some of the staffing issues at the house intervened, uh, so I think probably now we can hopefully get back to some kind of normalcy.
Yeah, it's been a difficult time, I think, for everyone. Um, Paul, I'll just ask the legal representatives who are present, uh, whether they would wish to seek leave to ask you any questions. Again, if nobody says anything, I'll assume the answer is no. All right, since nobody has said anything, the answer is no. Paul, thank you very much for your evidence, for your detailed statement and your very helpful analysis of what has happened and, uh, your ideas for what might be done to improve things for the future. We're very grateful to you for having come to the Commission to give your evidence, thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we now adjourn, uh, and, uh, this time, I think we'll give ourselves fifty-eight minutes for lunch, so we'll resume at, uh, two ten P M.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr Griffin.
Chair, Commissioners, I intend to call four witnesses this afternoon who will give concurrent evidence. Those witnesses will be known collectively as the O P A, the Office of the Public Advocate Witnesses, and they are as follows. Dr Colleen Pearce, the public advocate for Victoria. Leonie Swift, the Community Visitors Programme Coordinator in the Office of the Public Advocate. Suzanne Rule, a community visitor, and Christine Barbuto, another community visitor. Can I indicate that Dr Pearce has not provided a new statement for this public hearing? However, she did provide two statements, the public hearing three, the first dated the fifteenth of November two thousand and nineteen. Exhibit three point one three in that hearing, which appears as the identified document S T A T dot double zero one three dot triple zero one dot triple zero one, which appears in hearing bundle B, tab six. Dr Pearce then provided a corrected statement dated the second of December two thousand and nineteen, identified as S T A T dot double zero one three dot triple zero two dot triple zero one, which appears in hearing bundle B at tab seven. There is also an exhibit from that earlier public hearing, exhibit three point one, three point five, which is a document entitled, and I quote, "I'm too scared to come out of my room", unquote. Preventing and responding to violence and abuse between co-residents in group homes. That document dated the November two thousand and nineteen is also in the bundle. And these three documents I've now referred to, as I mentioned, are tabs six, seven and seven A, respectively, of volume one of hearing bundle B. The second witness, Leonie Swift, has provided a statement for this public hearing dated the nineteenth of November two thousand and twenty-one. Identify S T A T dot zero four eight nine dot triple zero one dot triple zero one, which appears in hearing bundle B, volume one, at tab five. The annexes to her statement appear in hearing bundle B, volume one, tabs, volume two, tabs one two nine to one five five. The third witness, Susan Rule, has provided the statement for this public hearing dated the eighteenth of November two thousand and twenty-one. Identify S T A T dot zero four double eight dot triple zero one dot triple zero one, to be found at hearing bundle B, tab four. The annexes to her statement appear in hearing bundle B at tabs one two three to one two eight.
Yes, thank you.
And finally, Christine Barbuto has provided a statement for this public hearing dated the seventeenth of November two thousand and twenty-one. Identify S T A T dot zero four eight three dot triple zero one dot triple zero one, appearing at hearing bundle tab three, hearing bundle B, that is. The annexes to her statement are in bundle B, volume one, tabs one hundred to one two two. Chair, as you are aware, all witnesses have been affirmed pursuant to an authorisation you gave for Mr Hugh Pearce to undertake that task.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, Dr Pearce, Ms Barbuto, Ms Rule, Ms Swift, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. Um, we appreciate your attendance and we appreciate the statements that have been provided either in two thousand and nineteen or more recently. Uh, just to explain where everybody is, uh, Commissioner Gelber is joining this, uh, hearing from Melbourne. Commissioner McEwan is with me in the Sydney Hearing Room on my right, and, uh, Mr Griffin is also in the Sydney Hearing Room, and I'll now ask Mr Griffin to ask you some questions.
Before I do that, Chair, can I take all concern to the statement of Leonie Swift, which appears in hearing bundle B, tab five? And in particular, the paragraph one hundred and eighteen of that statement.
Yes.
The last two sen- sentences of paragraph one hundred and eighteen are to be deleted.
That's the sentence beginning, I believe, and the next sentence.
Yes, so from I believe to the end of the paragraph. Chair, that is as a result of discussions we've had with the Commonwealth, uh, which I needn't go into any further detail at this stage.
All right, well then, uh, I note that the last two sentences of paragraph one hundred and eighteen of Miss Swis- uh, Swift's statement are to be deleted, thank you.
Chair, can I ask the three witnesses who have provided contemporary statements respectively, Leonie Swift, Suzanne Rule and Christine Barbuto, to indicate whether the contents of those statements are true and correct to the best of ability, and if they could do that one by one? Uh, starting with Ms Swift?
Uh, yes, they are correct.
Uh, Ms Rule?
Yes, they are correct.
And Ms Barbuto?
Yes, they are correct.
Dr Pearce, if I could commence by asking if you could outline briefly, what is the role of the public advocate in the state of Victoria?
Yes, thank you. The public advocate is an independent statutory officer with legislative powers to promote the, promote and safeguard the rights and interests of people with disability. Under the Victorian Guardianship and Administration Act, I have several functions, all of which relate to promoting the independence and human rights of people with disability and protecting people with a disability from abuse, neglect and exploitation. I've been the Victorian Public Advocate since 2007. The Office of the Public Advocate provides a range of critical services for people with a disability and people with a mental illness, including guardianship, advocacy, investigations, an advice service and two volunteer programmes, including the coordination of the Community Visitors Programme. The office has around 100 staff and around 650 volunteers.
Dr Pearce, for the benefit of those following this hearing, can you indicate what is the role of a community visitor?
Community visitors play a vital role in safeguarding the rights and wellbeing of people with a disability. We often describe them as being the eyes and ears of the community. They go into settings where often the only other people to enter into those settings are paid workers. Community visitors visit eligible Victorian accommodation facilities for people with a disability or mental illness in their local area. They monitor and report on the adequacy of the services provided and where possible, communicate with residents or patients to ensure they're being treated with dignity and respect. They visit to ensure that people are free from violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation and have the opportunity to lead a meaningful and flourishing life.
Are our community visitors selected and appointed in the state of Victoria?
So the first step in recruiting a community visitor is the advertisement process. So we advertise quite widely. Once we receive an application, we conduct an interview, reference checks are undertaken and an applicant must meet and be assessed against the competencies set out for the role. On the basis of the person being successful in interview and that they can provide appropriate documentation for identification and a national police check, they're invited to an induction and allocated to a regional convener who is a volunteer team leader in the stream that they have selected. New community visitors are required to do at least 10 hours of visiting as a trainee in addition to their stream specific training. On successfully completing their traineeship, the trainee is recommended by the public advocate and the, sorry, is recommended to the public advocate. And then in turn, I recommend them to the relevant minister for a governor and council appointment. So that means they are independent appointees.
And they're appointed initially for a three-year period?
Yes.
And they are eligible for reappointment?
Yes.
Ms Swift, can I ask you, as the coordinator for the North Division of Victoria within the OPA, how are the community visitors organised to do their work and how are they supervised?
As Dr Pearce mentioned, there is a, there are regional conveners who are lead volunteers for an area and they usually cover about 30 to 40 houses in the disability stream. So we have three streams of the programme under the Disability Act, Mental Health Act and Supported Residential Services. So I'll just talk about the disability stream. We have regional conveners and they're responsible for 30 to 40 houses in the metropolitan area. Within that, there's then panels which cover about five to 10 houses. And there's a panel secretary who's a volunteer that, that heads up that panel, who's responsible for writing the report and ensuring that it reaches the Office of the Public Advocate and also that they organise the visits and advocate if there's any or escalate any matters that need follow-up. There's, each panel usually has two to three people and people, community visitors visit in pairs and they can do unannounced or announced visits together.
Are you familiar with how many of the visits are pre-planned as opposed to the unannounced visits?
Most visits are unannounced. During the last two years because of COVID, a lot of the visits have had to be done either by telephone or video link. So they have been pre-planned and organised with the houses. But generally, visits would be unannounced. The only time that you might do an announced visit is if you want to make sure that particular resident is home or you want to talk to the house supervisor who heads up the staff in that house to clarify some matters.
I can go back to Dr Pearce. Section 30 of the Disability Act 2006 in Victoria sets out eight matters that can be inquired to, into in relation to the work that community visitors in your office do. And then Section 130 sets out five entitlements of a community visitor when they're visiting a service provider. 1D of Section 130 says, and I quote, "The community visitor may inspect any document relating to any resident which is not a medical record and any records required to be kept by or under this act." Dr Pearce, have you always understood that provision to say that a community visitor is entitled to inspect incident reports in a service provider's facility?
I have.
Have you ever had a service provider in Victoria, including LWB, dispute that entitlement under the Act?
Yes, and it's really very common that community visitors are unable to access incident reports at the, at the time of the visit. And there's a litany of excuses as to why that might be the case. Anything from, "We keep our incident reports at head office. Oh, they're on the computer and you can see them, but I'm sorry, I don't know the password." Or you can use the computer and spend all of your time hunting through our records and not speaking to the residents. Oh, they're in a folder, we've printed them off, they're in a folder, but unfortunately we can't find them. Or I'm, I'm a casual and actually I don't know if there's been any incident reports either. So there's a litany of excuses. And I think it's around 50% of cases of visits where we would not be able to access incident reports. So 50% of all visits.
Dr Pearce, you're moving a little ahead of me at this moment. My specific question was, has any provider, including LWB, ever disputed the legal interpretation that a community visitor is entitled to see the incident reports?
Yes.
We may be at cross purposes. Let, let me be more direct as I'm entitled to leading. Do I take it, no one has ever said to your office, "You're not allowed to see these because you've got no, no legal right to see them"?
Yes, that is right. Now, I couldn't tell you specifically at this point in time whether LWB was one of those, but there have been some providers that have disputed the fact that we are entitled to see incident reports.
And what, and what basis do you recall they asserted that they didn't have to show your visitors those reports?
Generally, they might say that that they're, they form part of their, one of them would be when a staff member is involved in an incident and they say, they would cite privacy concerns. So they would say that we can't show you the incident report because there's privacy concerns that would prohibit us from showing you that because staff are entitled to privacy. So that's probably the most common reason.
Let me move on with you, Dr Pearce.
Sorry, has anybody said that the reason is that these records don't have to be kept under the Victorian Disability Act as distinct from the NDIS Act?
I'd need to take that as a question on notice. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Can I have put up a snapshot of the 2019, 2020 and the 2020, 2021 annual report of the community visitors? Dr Pearce, can you see on screen those documents?
Yes, I can.
They seek to summarise what's contained in the annual reports insofar as it refers to community visitors. Is that correct?
Yes.
And if I can take you to those briefly, it seems that when one compares 2019, 20 with 2021, the number of community visitors in Victoria has declined from 443 to 394. Do you agree?
Yes.
The active community visitors has declined from 400 to 337. And the total visits has declined over those two years from 4,142 to 3,718. Let me pause there. Is, are those decreases in figures largely referable to the circumstances of lockdown and COVID in Victoria?
Yes, yes, they are. Community visitors, there would be some community visitors who took the opportunity to retire and perhaps even between lockdowns felt very reticent. Others felt reticent about visiting houses because of their age and their concerns about contracting COVID. It's also, many community visitors found that they had a preference for face-to-face visits rather than the announced telephone visits. They didn't find that as satisfactory or as rewarding. So there's a range of reasons, almost entirely directly attributable attributable to issues related to the pandemic.
There's also a snapshot that indicates that in 2019, 20, abuse-related issues are listed as 669 with a note, 36% increase on last year. Is that because you've categorised issues differently or was there in fact and a jump in what I might call substantive abuse issues recorded?
I, I think it's both. Community visitors over recent years have had extensive training in, provided by an external provider in identification of abuse and in improvement in recording. So community visitors are better prepared now to look for abuse and to record it. But, and so we have been able to see more abuse and to record it and report on it.
Very briefly, can you tell the commissioners what sort of matters would come under the heading of abuse in those reports?
A significant amount of the abuse relates to resident-to-resident violence. That is really the most common of all of the abuse that we see. We see a very small proportion of staff to resident violence. It's not anywhere near as common, but the majority of it is resident-to-resident violence.
And can I finish up dealing with the snapshots by taking you to the abuse referrals to the, firstly, the Disability Services Commissioner, which are respectively 63 in the first year and 51 in the next. And secondly, referrals to the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission, which were respectively 52 and 36. Can I ask you to comment briefly on, is the experience of your office different with the referral to the Disability Services Commissioner as opposed to the referrals that have been made to the QSC?
Yes, but I should preface my remarks by saying it's taken us quite a while to train the DSC and by the time we were transferring responsibility to the NDIS Quality and Safeguarding Commission, we had quite a lot of experience with the DSC. So we worked very well together and they understood how we worked. The experience with the Quality and Safeguarding Commission is that was, was new and a different level of experience. With the DSC, we would send in referrals low, medium and high risk. But with the Quality and Safeguarding Commission, we only send in the high-risk referrals. And we now refer medium and low risk directly to service providers.
And so those figures I've just taken to you in the snapshot in the sense crude figures because there's slightly different considerations which have applied in respective referrals?
Yes.
If I, sorry, if I might move on to Sue Rule and Christine Barbuto. You've undertaken numerous visits to the LWB house called the Melbourne Home in this hearing, haven't you?
Yes.
And can I indicate to the commission that I asked you to undertake a task of going through your reports to see if you could draw out some recurring issues? And when I say recurring issues, issues that might have been present in 2013 and might still be present today. Do you recall doing that exercise?
Yes.
And can you confirm that the primary issues that you identified were as follows? Firstly, the high frequency and intensity of resident-to-resident violence and conflict at the Melbourne House.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
Would either of you or both care to comment by way of elaboration as to the frequency and intensity of resident-to-resident violence in that house based on your visits and reports?
I've been visiting that house since 2013. I haven't visited since it changed providers, so all of my visits were done. My house was under the auspices of LWB. That house has had frequent and intense resident-on-resident violence for the whole of that period, with some periods where it was less evident than others. Some, some, at times we were satisfied that it was being managed relatively well. But the majority of the time, we were surprised and pleasantly surprised about the frequency and intensity of the violence between residents. And that was despite the fact that one of the initial residents in the early period I visited was moved to a different house because of her propensity for violence towards a number of the other residents. The person who was moved in, there was a honeymoon period, as I would term it, before there was violence again in that house that escalated from minor concerns again to major concerns. And I would suggest that the majority of my reports, and I think I've visited over 20 times in that period, the majority of my reports would have commented on the level of violence that was occurring in that house.
Can I ask you to pause there? Do I take from your answer that two significant factors are who's living in the house and how compatible they are with the other residents as a first factor? And secondly, the quality of management and leadership in the house at a particular time?
I would confirm that to be the case.
And did you find to a certain extent there was sometimes a correlation between who was in the house and the quality of leadership of the house with the extent of resident-to-resident violence?
I, the leadership was very important. And yes, I would suggest that when the leadership was lacking or inadequate, that the staff, the support staff, didn't feel that they had either the knowledge or the support to effectively manage what was happening in the house.
Can I explore that answer a little further? Did you on occasions feel that the frontline staff in the house didn't feel like they had sufficient support or backing from the management of LWB?
Yes, yes, we were told by the staff, and in fact in some of our reports we wrote, that staff said to us they didn't feel supported. There were times when staff needed to access records or reports from psychologists and clinicians and people like that, which may have assisted them with managing the behaviour. And they were not able to access that, possibly because, sorry.
Just pausing there if I can, was staff saying to you that this information was within the records of LWB, but they couldn't get access to it?
Well, we don't really know, they didn't say it in so many words. But we knew as community visitors that the reports had been, or we were told by LWB that clinicians had been involved and therefore they would have been. And sometimes we were told that there had been final reports or the final report would be in a couple of weeks. But when we visited the house, staff had no knowledge of this report.
I'll come back to that in more detail later. Sue, the second identifier that you drew out of looking at all the reports was the quality of care and support provided to staff themselves. Can you tell us a little bit about what you observed and why you came to that view?
I think, I would say that all staff who worked in the house had the best interest of the residents at heart. But they were not given access, they were not given the support. They were not given, sometimes they were not given techniques to deal with the resident-to-resident abuse. Very often, the only, the only the only resolution that staff could do was to take one of the residents out, to put them in the car and take them out for a drive. And, you know, often not come back until after the evening meal when most of the others were in bed. There were, there were times when we as community visitors saw lists of suggested activities which possibly would have helped some of the behaviour because it would have kept residents busy. But staff did not seem to be aware of this. Yeah, I think I would say that staff were not supported in their ability to deal with, most of, most of the time, in their ability to deal with resident-to-resident abuse.
The third issue which you drew out for us was the level of expertise and the formal and informal training of the support staff. Can I ask you to comment on that, Sue?
Yes, I think support workers have to have a minimum amount of, of training. And then usually you find that the organisation that manages the houses will have ongoing training available to them. There are two issues. One was LWB employed a lot of casual or agency staff who would have had very minimal, I think it's fair to say, very minimal training. And the other, the other issue was that LWB, it appears did not allow staff extra time to go to training sessions. So staff, most of the time, staff needed to do it in their own time.
Can I address to all of the panel the question, if you're in a position to comment, what do you believe the basic level of qualification for a support worker in a house such as the Melbourne House, which had a number of residents with very significant behaviours of concern, should be?
I would like to see them having the certificate four in disability. And then I would like to see that if it's not part of that curriculum, that there be a focus on in-service training that certainly addressed managing behaviours of concern and understanding triggers for behaviours of concern. I, I, my experience with LWB is that few of the staff, as far as I'm aware, had that certificate four when they commenced. And some of them, I believe, had no qualification at all, which is very concerning. But my preference would be for that certificate four in disability.
Anyone else wish to comment on that?
I might add that, I guess, early in the 2000s, and the department ran over half the houses in Victoria. And they did require that staff had, any ongoing staff had to either have that certificate four or they had to agree to undertake that training to that level. And also some of the other big organisations required that. That's now changed, of course, under the NDIS, that's not a minimum requirement. And I used to work in the managing the disability training unit within the department. And I know that the certificate four level has a lot more about teaching people skills and encouraging the empowerment of people with disabilities. Rather than a certificate three level is more orientated to doing the minding people, personal hygiene, basic manual handling, things like that, rather than actually equipping people perhaps to deal with and to support people effectively who have very complex needs.
So am I, am I correct in assuming that we've moved from a position where at least department-controlled houses in Victoria had a mandatory educational requirement to a situation now where it's at the discretion of the providers?
That's my understanding. And if I could, if I could just add that what we're seeing here in Victoria is an explosion in the number of providers. And many of those are not the big organisations like Life Without Barriers. And that possibly is a good thing. But when we do come in contact with the, many of these other providers, many of them have no experience at all in the disability sector prior to setting up some of these NDIS-related businesses. So it's not just staff are unqualified, that they, it's also that they have no experience or understanding of issues related to people with disability.
Dr Pearce, when you say an explosion of providers, are you able to quantify to what degree there's been a change in the Victorian environment?
I couldn't, I couldn't give you numbers, that's something you'd have to ask NDIS. But certainly the number of providers that are coming to the attention of my office, either because we've had anonymous calls to our advice line with allegations of abuse or of stories of inadequate service provision. We will ask around the office, has anybody heard of these organisations? No, none of us know who they are.
Now, Dr Pearce, I don't want to stray too much from the scope of this public hearing. But based on your personal experience, what's the nature of the complaints coming in in relation to new providers in 2021?
Well, many of them set up what they call private rental accommodation. And, you know, I do dispute whether or not it's private rental accommodation. So it does mean that community visitors cannot visit. There's been serious allegations about people being lured out of either supported residential services or SDA into accommodation. And where the substantial allegation is that the package, the NDIS package has been, the expenditure of it has gone up very, very quickly over a short period of time. And when the package is exhausted, often in a very short period of time, then they are returned either to supported residential services or are threatened with eviction. And because they're described as private rental accommodation, it's unclear what their tenancy rights are.
Just to finish on this topic, Dr Pearce, is it your suspicion that some providers may be, to use my term, gaming system? And when it no longer suits them, returning the resident to some other form of accommodation?
Yes, and just two very quick examples. One person with a package of around 600,000 prior to going into a private rental accommodation didn't have, had 24/7 care. But the provider said that they were too difficult to manage. So they put in two people, 24/7, and their package was moved, was finished, used up within seven months. And they are now being threatened with eviction. So that's, that's one very recent example. And the second example has just slipped my mind, so I might have to come back to you on that.
Sue and Christine, can I return to the factors you drew out of your reports about the Melbourne House? The fourth factor identified was the frequency of staff turnover of both support workers and of management. Describe to us what you observed about staff turnover and management turnover at different times.
And the, there were times when the house was completely staffed by casual and agency staff with no core worker present and no house supervisor present. There were times when, there were periods of time when the program manager position was vacant. There was an amount of staff churn, not terribly unusual in the sector. But at this house, it seemed to be that it was more than most other houses. I can recall an occasion when I visited the house, there was a, there was no house supervisor. There was one to come on in a month's time and three experienced staff had left. And there were three new staff who were described to me as good but not experienced. And that, that was not uncommon, especially throughout the first perhaps four or five years that I was visiting that house. It's still, it is still their fact that there is quite a lot of casualisation and agency staff used. But I would say that it is not only LWB who has that as, as part of the way they deliver services. It is not uncommon in some of the other houses I've visited as well.
On the occasion you went to the house and there were no full-time permanent staff there, the only staff were casual or agency. Did you raise that issue with LWB?
I believe it was in my report that we were disappointed to see the number of agency staff and the fact that all of the residents from the house, except for one resident who'd been temporarily relocated, were being supported by people that they did not know.
How important in your observation is it for residents to know and be familiar with the support workers that are helping to take care of them?
I think it's crucial to good management of the house. The residents are faced with people coming and going a lot when they're in that kind of accommodation. And they need to be familiar with people, with the staff. And the staff need to be familiar with them to provide appropriate support. And you have agency staff coming in, they very often will not even have time to read a behaviour support plan, let alone appropriately support a resident. It is upsetting for the residents and, and often will find that their behaviours, their heightened behaviours increase and the number of incidents of resident-on-resident violence increase. And we've had instances where residents have been sent off to their day placement on the wrong day and where residents have turned up at their day placement, not in their own clothes, but in somebody else's. So those, those kind of things to me are violating the client's right. It's very undignified to be putting someone else's clothing. So I, I think it's, it's to the detriment of the service when we don't have consistency of staffing.
Can I, can I just add as well?
Thank you, Sue.
Can I, oh, excuse me, can I just add?
Just take a moment, have a drink, we're all subject to that as the commissioners have observed with me over the last few days.
Can I, can I just add that LWB had a very complicated structure of house supervisors and team leaders. In the time that I visited, the names changed very often. There were practice leaders, there were house supervisors, there were team leaders, there was program managers. They probably all did similar jobs, but the names kept changing. The other, the other practice that LWB and some other houses, some other agencies have is to have a, a practice leader or a supervisor over three houses. So that person actually doesn't work on a day-to-day basis or a week-to-week basis in the house. They manage three different houses, so they have to keep tabs on all sorts of things. And I don't believe that that's the good way for them to be able to either support staff or supervise staff or to keep tabs on whether the residents are being cared for in an appropriate way and having their best quality of life.
Did the management you just described of LWB and its structure differ from the houses of other providers that you regularly visited?
I don't think, it varies. Different agencies have different ways of structuring things. I do think that LWB, particularly in the beginning, had many, many changes, which were probably more than other agencies. And that, that applied to all WB, LWB houses in the northern metropolitan region. Sometimes, yeah, support workers in the houses will change, but the management don't necessarily. And I think it's really important that the upper management know what they're doing. They, they know about disability, they know about the people who live in the houses and they know the needs of each particular house.
When you mentioned- Sorry to interrupt, but Paul, in his evidence earlier, suggested that one problem with LWB was that it was run in effect centrally from Newcastle. And these, that Melbourne House obviously is in Victoria. Are you able to make any comment on that organisational element of LWB compared with other service providers?
I would definitely agree with that. The other service providers that I have dealings with are all based in Victoria. One example of LWB being based in another state and not necessarily knowing Victorian regulations or, or not knowing what's happening on the ground, was that LWB in the beginning, the household budget was, for each house, was managed centrally. And there was a policy that staff, support workers in the house, were not able to access cash. So there were times when we visited the Melbourne House and possibly other LWB houses where staff would say to us that they were taking residents out for dinner because they had run out of money to buy supplies. There were times, I think Christine would agree with me, when we visited the house and there was very little in the fridge. And staff would say to us, support workers would say to us, oh, it's almost the end of the week or the end of the budget, we need to go and collect money. Their money was held.
Just pausing there for a moment. Am I correct in recollecting that on occasion staff would say they had to physically go from the house to the LWB office to get cash to go and buy things?
Yes.
And this was in the period from 2013 onwards?
Yes, and I believe that because the management was centralised in New South Wales and the policy was that support workers or people
and the policy was that support workers or people in the houses were not able to access cash, so that was their policy, that only the management could deal with the cash. So in Victoria, it was a ridiculous situation where one support worker had to leave the house and drive across Melbourne to collect the money for the households that are following, I think probably a fortnight, I'm not sure, I can't quite remember.
And picking up something you said a little earlier, you were describing how one management person might be responsible for three houses. Did that person visit each house each day?
No, I think they were expected to visit once a week, but that's from what staff told us, that necessarily, didn't necessarily happen.
You agree? Yes, one of the, um, we queried whether, how frequently a program manager should visit the house. And we were given a, we were told that they should be there one to two days a week. When we spoke with staff, they told us that most of the communication was via email. We queried that with L W B and we were told that uh, that was the best way to get information to all of the support workers. Uh, we were not, um, we didn't think that that was the best model of support.
So did you find there was a discrepancy between what L W B said they were going to do and what the staff were telling you they actually did in terms of management?
Yes, yes.
The fifth and sixth matters that you identified from looking through your reports, I think we've touched on suffi- sufficiently, but I'll indicate them for the purposes of the commissioners. The fifth was the frequent reliance on casual and agency staff. And the sixth was the apparent lack of leadership and support provided to workers at the Melbourne House by management. The final matter you identified was missing inadequate and/or inaccessible documentation and records. Can you describe to the commissioners what a typical visit would look like when you had difficulty accessing records?
Um, so we would, we would attend the house and ask to look at the documentation as we are allowed to or under the Act. Um, and we were not denied access to the physical documentation that was held there. But often there would be pieces of information that should have been there that weren't. Um, or information that was out of date or documents that were out of date. It was very confusing because in the earlier period, L W B had two to three folders per resident for different parts of the system and different documentation. And there was no, there was no consistency. We could look at one set of, um, one particular folder for one resident, we had something different in the same folder for another resident. So that was confusing, but the, the, the thing that was most hampering for us was our inability to access critical incident reports. Because these are fundamental to us actually, um, looking at the, the frequency and, and the severity of incidents in the houses. Um, we, we very often were not able to access the critical incident reports at all, despite the protocol suggesting that they should be um, held in the house so that we could see them. Um, and, yeah, so there would often be a, an individual support plan that were out of date or behavioural support plans which hadn't been looked at or staff weren't actually aware of them and, and how to actually utilise them. So, yeah, it was, it was confusing to us because there was no consistency in the record keeping. It was too much in terms of documentation, there was not enough cross, cross-referencing and there were missing documents and I'm particularly referring to the critical incident report.
Let me unpick that answer a little. Let me unpick that answer a little. What was your expectation when you went to the house as to what categories of documentation would be there if you needed to see it? You would expect to see critical incident reports?
Yes.
Would you expect to see any response to those reports kept at the house?
The, the critical incident report should not only describe the incident, but it should also describe management's response to that, that and the outcome um, from the critical incident report. Very often at that house, if we saw a critical incident report at all, it may be just one line that describes an incident or they, the incident, we may find out there'd been an incident by looking at other documentation, go looking for a critical incident report and it would be missing. But they were meant to be held at the house for us to be able to view them or we should have been able to have access to them online.
Under the Act, you're entitled to look at a resident's medical records with the consent of the resident. Did you ever have cause to do that?
I can only recall one occasion and it was not at that house.
Right.
No, I don't think I ever did.
Okay. If you wanted to get some information about a resident's behaviours of concern and indeed the range of their disabilities, was that information available at the Melbourne House when you visited?
Uh, yes, there would have been a client profile, it has different names, but there would be a client profile that gave a bit of background information about the person and what their disabilities were. I would expect to see that and I believe I did see that at that house.
Would you also see some documentation about what their supports were and what activities they were meant to be involved in?
Um, that was variable, but in the main, yes.
Later on, I think L W B went to an electronic form of record keeping to some extent. And that was during this time, wasn't it?
Yes.
And I think the program was called iSIGHT, I S I G H T, is that right?
Yeah.
You smile, um. Did that improve your access to records so you could do your job when they became electronically recorded?
No. No.
There is?
Sorry, why not?
Yes, that's good.
It, it, the, once they, once L W B moved to iSIGHT, we had no ability to look at uh, the, the um, critical incident reports at the house because the, when, when a critical incident report, uh, they were no longer recording them on paper or leaving paper copies in the house. So once it went on to iSIGHT, we were not given uh, access to the computer to be able to look at the reports at all. And that persisted for years and for as long as iSIGHT used it.
So when you say you weren't given access to a computer, what do you mean by that? Did the house not have?
The house had computers, however, with, when it came to critical incident reports, the program leader could see them, the uh, the house, whatever they were called at the time, the house supervisor or team leader there could access them. But casual staff and agency staff could not access them on, there on the computer at all. And once the matter had been dealt with, even the person who had entered the data couldn't actually access the critical incident reports at the house.
Can you just repeat that last sentence? The person that inputted the data couldn't then access it?
No. Once, once it had been dealt with and the matter was deemed to be finalised, they had no more access to them. That's my understanding.
Did, sorry, did, did uh, the Office of the Public Advocate, one way or another, seek access to the uh, electronic material? And if so, what happened?
Yeah, we certainly did. Um, I think through liaison meetings, also through the community visitor reports, of course, um, where these issues were raised. There was a meeting in May two thousand and nineteen which um, Dr. Pearce um, chaired. And we met with senior people from the agency. Um, and at that meeting, um, I minuted that Chris said that they hadn't been able to get access for eighteen months through iSIGHT. So that was uh, something that we really pushed with them. And we did get through a summary of incidents after that time, but it's still been quite frustrating right up till today. There's been um, particular managers who've sent us things upon request, but as an ongoing thing, it's not possible for the community visitors still to access incident reports. Or um, since during the COVID time, of course, they've mainly been doing remote visits. Some agencies have given us electronic summaries of incidents, but we haven't been able to obtain those from us without barriers.
The chair has jumped a little ahead of where I was going, but let me deal with this issue now. You're referring to a meeting between the O P A and L W B management on the twenty fourth of May two thousand and nineteen?
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioners and those involved in the hearing. The minutes of that meeting are identified as O P A dot double nine, double nine, dot double, triple zero, four, dot zero, three, seven, eight. They appear in hearing bundle B at tab one hundred and twenty-two. Before we have a break for the afternoon, I'll just go through some of the details in that meeting. Firstly, it was attended by Ashley Crichton, the National Client Services Manager of L W B. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Dr. Pearce, perhaps I should, you were present, Dr. Pearce?
So, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You were present at that meeting on the twenty fourth of May, two thousand and nineteen? It's correct that Ashley Crichton, the National Client Services Manager, L W B, was present?
Yes.
And you understood that he actually flown down for the meeting?
Yes.
And it's outlined in the minutes the sorts of things that were discussed. But was that meeting convened, Dr. Pearce, because the O P A was concerned about a whole range of issues involving L W B?
Yes, that's correct.
And the broad concerns were discussed as outlined in the minutes. And it was indicated that those concerns about L W B were not confined to the Melbourne House, that's correct, isn't it?
Yes.
And during that meeting, Christine Babutu outlined the experiences she had had of visiting the Melbourne House and other houses, the inability to view incident reports for a period of about eighteen months. Is that your recollection?
Yeah, yes.
And that eighteen-month period had been since L W B introduced the iSIGHT electronic system?
Yes.
And that complaint was outlined to Mr. Crichton and others as outlined in Christine Babutu's statement, paragraphs one twenty-eight to one twenty-nine. Was there also a complaint raised at that meeting about L W B's response to issues of resident-to-resident violence and abuse?
Yes.
What was the nature of that complaint that was made to the senior management of L W B?
Yeah, um, I guess there was a number of issues, um, and Chris, Chris can talk about this because she had written a, a statement that went, uh, that was tabled at the meeting. Uh, but some of the issues were because there had been some assaults in the uh, house. Um, that there hadn't, that hadn't been reported to the police and there hadn't also medical, um, support wasn't sought immediately. So there was a resident who had a chair broken over her head by another resident. She actually sustained a fractured finger when she was shielding her head. Um, and um, Chris, uh, I guess noted that, uh, brought that to the attention of the managers that were present. That there hadn't been, um, you know, she wasn't checked for concussion or uh, any, any sort of other injuries after that.
That was a resident, you, you were in, you were told that resident had been hit over the head three times with a plastic chair and the chair broke. And despite that, despite that, there was no immediate X-ray of the victim and there was no concussion test, as far as you're aware. Is that right?
As, as it was reported to us by staff and from what we saw, yes, that's correct. The incident, I believe, happened on a Saturday. Uh, uh, locu was um, not sought until the following day. And then there, it wasn't until the following first day that an X-ray was taken of her hand to determine that that finger had actually been fractured. As far as I'm aware, there was no, there was no uh, check of hers for concussion despite the chair having been broken over her head and-
And you understood, you understood she'd put her hand up to try and fend off yourself?
She had been trying to shield her head, I believe, like so was described to me and that the chair was, hit her on the hand. I, I, I don't have further detail, but to me, any, anything where there has been trauma around the head, I would have thought perhaps concussion should have been accepted.
Can I ask you, Dr. Pearce, broadly, what was the response of L W B at that meeting to these concerns?
Uh, look, there was a lot of, um, uh, I, I thought the meeting was very positive broadly, but in terms of response to those specific issues, I'm going to go back to Leonie or Sue, just to say what was your view about that?
Well, I remember we had to chase up afterwards about the incident reports still. Um, uh, so there were actions agreed in the meeting that weren't necessarily immediately followed through. Um, there was a state manager at the time, or state director, I'm not sure, but um, left the position shortly afterwards, I don't know the circumstances with that. Um, but yeah, um, I, I think there was some improvement. Um, or at least I felt there was a, a greater understanding that perhaps some of the people at the senior management level, like the quality assurance person, the client, um, national client manager, hadn't been aware of some of the issues. Um, it was discussing a number of their houses and there were issues related to staff training, for instance, that were discussed, um, and the follow-up of some other residents. Um, so I think, yeah, I felt it did help move things along. And the, the meeting itself, I thought, was positive, but it's really what occurs afterwards. Um, you can have all kinds of very positive meetings, but it's what occurs afterwards. And um, Leonie's just described um, having to chase up and follow up things um, afterwards and not necessarily being um, significant change, particularly in relation to access to incident records.
This was when L W B only had, um, you know, five or six houses in the state. And shortly after that, you know, they were allocated another, over a hundred houses from the department. So, um, I guess, yeah, we were a bit surprised about that because of the context.
Look, that's something that no doubt we will take up with other witnesses. But it does seem a trifle mind-boggling that you could have this level of concern about both the Melbourne House and other L W B houses. And shortly after, they're entrusted with, you say a hundred houses?
Well, over a hundred.
Yes. Um, before we break, Dr. Pearce, um, in the minutes when referring to incident reports under tab one twenty-two, the response given under heading action is Ashley to produce incident summary report with fields required by the community visitors, that was a positive outcome, I take it?
Mm-hmm.
But then L W B to explore how community visitors can also access information at the house. Those of us with my background become a little concerned about the word explore. It doesn't seem to commit anyone to doing anything. What happened in relation to access to information at the house post the twenty-four May meeting?
I'm again going to defer to the people who actually visit the house for that.
Um, not very much. Um, we still are not, uh, we're not able to visit, uh, to um, look at records at the houses in the May- look at records at the houses in the main. A new program manager was appointed during that period. And she gave me an undertaking that she would provide me with a critical incident report. However, they weren't provided to the house. They were emailed to me. Uh, they did give significant information about incidents and also about how management would follow up. But they were not, unless I distributed them to community visitors, they were not made available to us at the houses.
Was it, was it explained to you why what you were being given wasn't being given to the relevant house?
No, I don't remember there being an explanation for that. I, I think the part of it was that the relevant people would be able, at the house, the support workers at the house, the house team leader would be able to look at the records online. I personally think that when there's been a critical incident, that all of the support staff need to be aware of the nature and the detail. Because if they come in at the end of the shift, uh, they want to know, and one of the residents is heightened, it would be very useful for them to know what the etiology of that was. Um, and I think they should be held there not just for community visitors, but also for support workers, to be able to have a look at the entirety of the incident and the response.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, I would, I would agree with that.
Okay, well, I might ask the chair whether we want to take a short break, uh, and we'll be back.
Yeah, uh, uh, well, um, I'm wondering whether the panel would like to have a short break or whether you'd prefer to continue. Uh, if you would like a short break, we certainly can do that, or we can continue and perhaps that would allow a slightly earlier finish. Whichever you prefer, you might have to make a majority decision or else Doctor Pearce will have a casting vote.
I, I think there's a, um, an agreement that they'd like a break.
Okay, well, let's have a break of ten minutes and we'll resume at three thirty Eastern daylight time.
Thank you.
Royal Commission is adjourned. Royal Commission is resumed.
Okay, Chair. In the minutes of the meeting I've been referring to, under point five, there's reference to reporting against resident goals. Do I take it that one of the roles of the community visitor is to see whether the resident is receiving the support that they require and it might be nominated in their plans?
Yeah, yeah.
And when that was discussed at the meeting, L W B undertook to provide information session on goals to the community visitors. What did that mean when they said that?
Remember that? I think, um, a training that was needed was provide their support staff to understand how to write goals and how to, uh, account for progress against goals, uh, in, in their monthly reporting. I think that that may have not been minuted as it was intended.
So when you looked at the records at the Melbourne House, did you find it difficult to find any record of what the goal was and what progress had been made towards it?
Uh, the, the support staff, I don't believe, were given sufficient, um, training in how to create an action plan, how to put measurable goals in it, how to measure those goals and how frequently to report against them. I think it was a, a inadequacy of the training on how a plan is to be written and reported against. So they would have a very generic goal, but you couldn't measure. So it might be something like, um, Bryony wishes to learn how to cook. Now, that's pretty difficult to measure, whereas if you say Bryony will learn one recipe per month for three months because she wants to learn how to cook, that's a measurable goal. They didn't know how to write plans and how to write measurable goals. It's very hard to report against a generic goal. And I think that was the thrust of that particular item on at that meeting rather than, uh, the L W B providing training to us. They need to provide it to their staff.
And so had more detail been included by identifying a goal and then identifying what if any progress was made towards it? That would have assisted your role.
Absolutely, because one of the, one of the, um, aims is to provide active support to residents. And active support consists of helping people to develop their skills to their optimum. Uh, so that's why you need, you have goals. So this is a skill that this person wishes to, um, enhance. And here's how we're, we're actually going to do it. So yes, it's, they, they needed to know how to do that so that you could see that they were being actively supported and not just passively managed and cared for. The care is really important. But so is maximizing people's potential. And that was the point of having those kind of plans and goals.
I think when I, uh, have a look at the minutes now, um, that action was, uh, in relation to a new quarterly format had, had been introduced into a Last Without Barriers houses. And, um, I think Chris was reporting, um, as a C V that people, the staff weren't clear about that format and how to use it. So it was, I think in that, there was some discussion about how, you know, how that format was going to be used and um, it was sort of, there was something for us to learn too about what was proposed. But I don't know, that there was there an information session.
Do I understand from that that the new format may have been a good idea, but unless the staff knew what it was and how to use it, it was rather pointless?
Yes, yeah. I, I think there were times when there was a lot of documentation that staff had to fill out, and I'm, I'm just taking it from the reports that I read. But, um, it, it varied, new, new things would get introduced and staff sometimes had to fill out a lot of things. Um, but maybe didn't have the time to do that or didn't really understand how to do that. I think that, I think that
You go ahead.
I think, I think that's very true. There were times when, in our reports, we mentioned that staff had a huge amount of paperwork to be filled out, some of which, um, seemed to be important, you know, such as matting body, you know, people who are prone to bruising and that sort of thing. That's really important that those sort of things are documented. But on the other hand, there were lots of checklists that seemed to us to not really mean anything very much. And staff didn't have, weren't given time to do that at the end of the shift. So often it was taken as part of the shift, which took them away from the care of and interacting with the residents. Um, but it also meant that, that other staff who came in just didn't have time to look over those sorts of things to find out what had happened the day before, what activities were provided.
You've raised an issue I was going to come to next. Did you ever have any discussion with the staff about whether they had a system of handover between one shift and the next?
I don't recall there ever, there being a formal protocol for handover. I believe it was uh, there were, there would be things written in the communication book. They, but they would mostly be around this, a person needs to go to the G P or this, this is happening tomorrow, can you make sure they've got money, um, rather than a handover of, uh, events that might have transpired through the day. Uh, the other handover was stuff, um, verbal, support worker to support worker.
I assume that most of you are familiar with the handover process in a hospital between nursing staff. And in short, it involves two components. Documentation about what's happened on the previous shift and a verbal explanation of any concerns that might be relevant to incoming shift. Is that the sort of thing you would expect to see ideally in a handover in a group home?
That, that's ideal. On the other hand, the, the support workers don't really have an opportunity to read very much. Um, so they, they would need it to be a succinct document, not pages and pages. Uh, uh, this is one of the issues with some of the behavioural support plans. They can be quite expensive. But a, a dot point would be much more useful for staff coming over, uh, coming in with a handover of several minutes, not half an hour.
Did either of you understand what L W B's policy was about calling the police in the event of violence between residents?
I didn't ever see a poli, a written policy. Um, there were times that we were trying, and again, because of, we were not able to access documentation, we often would hear staff say that an incident had occurred, um, and presumably had been documented, but we didn't see it. Um, and they would say the police were called. But again, I don't ever remember reading in a document or a critical incident report that police had been called.
So you're not aware of what if any threshold there may have been?
No, I, I don't think so.
Okay, I'm sorry to talk over you.
Oh, no, I was just going to say that, um, I know there was an instance where police were called, um, when a staff member was injured. That was early on in two thousand and thirteen. And an ambulance was also called in that instance.
But you're not familiar whether L W B had a policy where an assault might occur as between residents?
No. I, I recall asking that question at the meeting and I believe it was Ashley who said the policy was for police to be called if there was a serious incident. I wa, I am aware that police had been called to the Melbourne House for one of the male residents who was aggressive. I recall writing that in a report that they'd been called at least twice uh, with respect to him. Um, and at, at a much later period, uh, it was confirmed that the protocol was to call police and that had been an oversight not to call them when the incident of, uh, one resident hitting the other one with a chair had occurred, that that was an oversight. So I believe that that policy was to call police, but I didn't ever see it written down.
There's also a reference in one of the reports from the third of October two thousand and nineteen, which in summary says that the community visitors were alarmed because they counted eight incidents of missed medication in approximately two and a half months, which includes the double-dosed meds for both of two residents and somebody continuing on a medication treatment for some considerable number of weeks after they should have been ceased on it. As a community visitor and given the fact that you had only access to medical records with consent, did you have access to records about medications that residents might be required to take?
No, no. Medical records are, are defined under the Disability Act and it's referring to doctors' notes. So, um, community visitors can view a number of other things related to um, matters like health checks and medication.
And so if a resident had a list of medications they were supposed to be taking, could a community visitor know what the medications were and what the frequency of taking them were and what the dosage was? Was that information available?
If we wanted to seek that out, we could have.
Um, would you normally have to have some particular reason to make that request? Or would you do it routinely as part of a, a, an informal audit?
Um, that would be dependent on the circumstances. Uh, we, the medication would be listed in the resident profiles and we have certainly had access to resident profiles. So we would know what medication they were on. If I wanted to know dosage levels, I would have asked a support worker. However, I'm no medical person, so dosage level is probably not something that was terribly meaningful to me. Um, I might have been familiar with what the medication was and what it would be administered for, but the dosage level I would perhaps not have even inquired about because it, it's not meaningful to me.
So would that be a matter which would normally be a matter between the management of the house and the general practitioner or other clinician that had prescribed the medication?
Yes, yes.
I'd like to move on to some final systemic issues uh, and see if you have any observations you can assist the commissioners with. Firstly, to you, Doctor Pearce. With the rollout of N D I, the rollout of N D I S has affected issues that we've been looking at, at this hearing. Have you formed any views from your position as a public advocate as to how the N D I S rollout differs from pre-N D I S in relation to the matters we've been discussing?
Yes. Um, firstly, I, I think the N D I S has made a significant improvement in the lives of many Australians with a disability and I don't think we can forget that. Um, but for people with, um, complex presentations, particularly those with cognitive impairments, um, there hasn't always been the same, um, outcomes for them. And there's, there's a number of reasons for that. And firstly, we've seen the move from block funding to a market-driven insurance model, which has left some of the most vulnerable people, um, at risk. Um, there is no longer a service provider of last resort. And in the past, that would have been the state government. Um, but, uh, in a market-driven, um, insurance model, uh, we don't, we don't have that same, um, provider of last resort.
Can I ask you to pause just there, Doctor? When one had a state system and perhaps a private system alongside it, did that enable each to learn from each other because they were different models often?
Uh, yes, I think the state played a very strong leadership role and had a very strong oversight role um, in, uh, it related to matters. So, um, and we certainly didn't see the same number of, you know, this diversity of new service providers uh, in the system. And as I said earlier, that's not necessarily a bad thing. But they would have been known to the department, they would have been registered by the department, they would have been, um, bought into, to that system. Um, and I think the other thing, of course, when there were issues where we had a person who was significantly at risk of homelessness or perhaps incarceration, um, uh, there, there's an adage, never go to a, a minister with a problem when you don't have a so, a solution. So the state would often find a solution and have the ability to draw in, um, access to housing. Thor could perhaps find, um, additional funding that might not otherwise have been available. And that's not the case anymore.
I should indicate that, um, this was one of the themes of public hearing fourteen that was held in Adelaide, which addressed the differences between the state system that predated the introduction of the N D I S in that state. So we did hear some evidence about, uh, the comparison between what occurs under the N D I S and under previous state systems. So it is something we've heard about before.
Yes. Well, perhaps just then adding to that, um, we've seen, um, uh, the issue of a shortage of, um, skilled behavioural support practitioners um, in Victoria and this can contribute to long delays in obtaining N D I S funding. Um, and even if there are appropriate services available, there can often be, um, a, a, a lack of funding in the individual's package. Uh, we see, um, uh, delays in, um, either getting alternative accommodation or funding. And that means participants can remain in situations of, uh, violence and abuse for very long periods of time. I just want to raise one other N D I S related matter, and that's the role of the support coordinator because they're quite pivotal. And we're getting increasing numbers of calls from, uh, support coordinators to our advice line. Uh, many of them would raise issues, uh, of abuse of people with a disability and they're really critical in the system. And they will say things to us like, uh, um, can I report this matter? There's privacy considerations and I'm not sure whether I can tell anybody. They'll say, I'm not funded to follow up this role. Perhaps if I tell your advice line, you could do something about it. Um, it's not my role. Or some people will say, I have a very good relationship with the parents or the service providers and I don't want to and I don't want to jeopardise that because I'm the only person that does. And, um, uh, concerningly, when you have this market-driven insurance model where people are dependent, um, for their incomes, people will say, I don't want to lose my job as a support coordinator because that's my income. So we see a pivotal role of the support coordinator who is in a position to report many issues and they are simply not, um, well, not always, but I'm really surprised how number, the number of calls that we are getting in relation to the role of support coordinators.
Members of the panel, I want to leave time for the commissioners to ask questions, so I'll cease my questioning now and invite the Chair to take over.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I shall ask Commissioner Galbally first if, uh, you have any questions of the panel. I'm looking for Commissioner Galbally on screen. Oh, there you are.
There I am. Thank you very much. Um, that was really interesting. Um, in terms of your visits, um, did you always, um, I'm sure you did, but I'd just like to hear more about your discussions, your extensive and deep discussions with residents themselves and what you heard from them from the Melbourne House?
I think, um, when I did my visits and most community visitors would do the same thing. We always, um, greeted people. It was their home that we were going into and I think we tried to be respectful of that. So as much as possible, we spent time with the residents. Um, and that's one of the frustrating things sometimes when we have to be in the office looking at documents or searching for documents when we could be sitting out in a common area, um, talking to residents or observing what's going on. Some of the residents have limited verbal communication, so it takes longer to interact with them. Um, as far as I'm concerned, it was always very important to spend time, probably more time with the residents than with support workers. But again, because particularly with L W B houses, because of the lack of documentation or the ease of being able to get to documents that we needed to look at, um, yeah, our time was limited. I mean, as I said, I think we're always respectful of it. It's someone's home. So you don't sort of go in and expect to spend three hours there. We're interrupting their normal flow of routine and I suppose in a way we're interrupting support workers with their work. Um, so we try and limit the visits, but always we speak to the residents, we interact with the residents, I think.
And did you specifically speak to Katie and Stevie? Um, the two that were, um, you know, sort of accused anyway of being violent? Did they, did they, did you ask them about that? And what was frustrating them and what they didn't enjoy in the house?
Stevie would not have been able to articulate that particularly well. Her communication is limited and she won't necessarily respond to what you've asked. She will generate something herself rather than, rather than answer, necessarily answer the question. So it would be difficult to ask her and on the occasion when she was heightened, it would be impossible to interact with her. When she was heightened, I would have retreated to the office in that house. It has what I term to be a barn door. In other words, a half door that you could close half of it or and close the whole of it. And it certainly would close the bottom half of that door because when Stevie's heightened, Stevie is quite confronting and, and likely to strike out and it's not possible to engage with her when she's in that state. Um, so asking Stevie about that was potentially not going to really add anything to what we learned. Katie is different. Katie is much more verbally proficient and would be able to tell you what she likes and what she dislikes. Um, so I, on occasion, when she was there, I would ask her what's it like living in this house and she would be able to provide an answer to that. I haven't seen Katie in a heightened state, so I'm not sure uh, how possible it is to engage with her when she's heightened.
Um, and just to add to that, the question, I was very struck by your comment, Miss Rule, about developing skills to the maximum. And is that, like, I understand that community visitors have to look at violence and abuse and those issues, you know, as a priority. But developing skills to the maximum seemed to you to be very important. Is there a reporting on that and whether these environments do um, have a, a way, you know, really, um, s- system, systemised approach to developing skills to the maximum? You sort of indicated maybe not, so.
Um, um, I think some agencies do it really well and, and we do in a community visitor reports, occasionally write, um, a good practice, um, uh, just a paragraph on good practice. And very often it is, you know, encouraging people to, um, to make their own breakfast if they're able to, things like that. Um, I think it's important that, you know, the, the people that we visit are not just cared for, um, but they do, a- and the, their activity programmes and their activities in general, um, and their interests as well are very often followed through. We, we don't always, unfortunately, um, probably because of the brevity of our visits. Um, and also the constraints of our report writing. Um, we can't always report on everything, but if, if there is something that's outstandingly, you know, that, that is great at developing people's skills in a particular way, we do report on it, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKeown. Uh, thank you. Uh, my thanks to, uh, the four of you. Uh, my one question is, uh, perhaps directed to Miss Babuta and Miss Rule in, and it's an extension of the first question that Commissioner Galbally asked you about. Is, I'm specifically interested to know, what did the resident tell you, if ever, about the opportunity, opportunities they had for meaningful participation and inclusion in the wider community? Did you ever have them tell you that perhaps they weren't getting the opportunities they wanted? Thank you.
Um, I, I don't recall the, having that manner of conversation with the resident. Um, we, we would be able to see what activities they were engaged in and sometimes there would be something written in their plan that would indicate that they wanted to, for example, go to three AFL matches in a year. And, uh, I do recall noting that that was one of the goals and that the person hadn't been to any. Um, so I guess there were times when things that were written on plans of activities were not actually followed through, but I'm not hypercritical of that at that house. There were opportunities for people to participate in community outside of their day placement. They would go bowling, for example, or, um, uh, go to the park for picnics. So I, I wouldn't be critical of the opportunities that they had to community participation in the main. I would agree with that.
Uh, okay, so I might just say though, but generally meaningful, perhaps meaningful inclusion means different things, but generally, did you get the feeling that they were being, maybe meaningful participation wasn't, wasn't occurring?
In community activity?
Yes, like the wider, like the local community festivals and the local, uh, shopping centres and all that kind of thing.
No, I, I think that they did have access to things that were going on locally.
Right, um, thank you, um, all of you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, um. Work that you do, the very valuable work that you do, seems to be very closely related to the functions of the N D I S Quality and Safeguards Commission. What is the relationship between, uh, the Office of the Public Advocate and community visitors specifically and the N D I S Q S C?
Um, of course we have a relationship and I have to say that, um, we both work hard to, um, maintain a meaningful, uh, productive um, and cooperative relationship. But it, uh, so my comments are really, uh, systemic issues and they relate to structure and mostly to information sharing provisions. And I do note there have been some recent amendments that, um, we do hope will mean that there will be better and more extensive ability for, uh, the commission to share information with us. But if you look at currently what it means and in particular you look at our, um, our agreements, uh, on information sharing, uh, you'll see that it's very one-way. The, we are welcome to provide as much information as possible to the commission and there is very little guarantee that we will get, um, a response. Now, we are working hard to adjust that, but it is within a system. So it does mean framing what community visitors do in the form of a complaint. And the kinds of things you've hea- you've heard today don't readily, um, can't readily be described as a complaint. Um, so it's, it's forcing it into that, into that frame. Um, but I am hopeful that the recent amendments, and we are yet to meet, uh, with the commission, we do have a scheduled meeting, I am hopeful that will lead to better information sharing. Because currently, when a community visitor raises an issue, um, and it ends up in the safeguarding commission and we don't get a response and we don't know what they do, community visitors go back to the house. And, uh, a participant or resident might say, yeah, but what happened? And we have to say, well, we don't know. We, we did, we did raise the issue, we talked to the service provider, we raised with the commission, but we don't always know what they did other than we're told it was referred, referred to the incident reporting team. Um, or it was referred somewhere else. Um, and as I said, that's not the commission being, um, cooperative. It is a function of the current information sharing provisions.
Yes, I wasn't intending to be critical either of the community visitors scheme or of the commission. But you're, you're, you're pointing to what might be regarded as structural issues. Uh, the, the structure of the N D I S, uh, the arrangements whereby service providers get paid, a kind of private enterprise model to some extent. And, um, there is also the issue, I think, that you've identified or at least emerges from the evidence, that a complaints-based system is maybe not terribly well-adapted to deal with the systemic issues that you've identified by reason of your fairly intimate association with a particular service provider. So there seems to be something of a gap between a complaints-based system and a system that is capable of identifying systemic issues, but then where do you go with those systemic issues? That seems to be something that's coming out. I invite you to comment on that. You, you may disagree with that as a, an analysis.
No, that, that's, that's, um, that's right and it's the same issue we have at, uh, the state level with the Disability Services Commissioner. Um, but I did want to say, uh, something really about the importance of the community visitor's role and it does go in part to the, the, uh, the question that you've raised. And, um, you know, aren't they impressive? I mean, they're completely impressive, the community visitor team that, um, we have here today. And you can see how vital and critical they are for the promotion and protection of the human rights of people with disability, um, particularly in what I described as, uh, described as closed environments. And they do see a lot of things and, um, w- with the change from the state to the Commonwealth, you see, um, their functions are under state legislation, but really it's the Commonwealth now that has, uh, through, through the, uh, Safeguarding Commission, that has responsibility. So you already start to see gaps that emerge, um, particularly over issues like instant access to instant reports and it's set out in state legislation. But community visitors don't have any function. They're not part of the framework, um, of, um, the quality and safeguarding, they're not part of the quality and safeguarding framework and they absolutely should be. And, um, there was a two thousand and eighteen, um, Westwood Spice review of community visitors. Um, and they argued that community visitors should be formally recognised within safeguarding, um, framework, but nothing has happened, uh, since then. Um, it is important in my view that community visitors retain their independence from both government and service providers because you can see they are fearless human rights champions and that independence gives them that ability to, um, raise a, a raft of issues. Um, but one other point as I raised earlier when I talked about, um, the explosion of, um, service delivery and service, uh, uh, service providers and the move to, um, what they're calling, um, private, private accommodation and the inability of community visitors to visit, um, those houses. And I have significant concerns about the financial exploitation of people living in those houses. Um, I haven't had any, uh, reports of, um, physical abuse, but we just simply don't know. And we don't know whether, um, people are receiving the services, uh, that they are entitled to receive and access to, uh, those houses by community visitors would give us insight um, into what's happening, um, in those services. And, um, increasingly, um, there are many, many houses that we do not have access to. That means that there is no ability, there's no independent monitoring of what happens and you rely on a complaints-based system where people in those houses are unsupported to raise complaints and, um, may not be aware of, you know, the kinds of campaigns that the D S C ran, which were, it's okay to complain. So there's no insight into what's happening into, um, many, many services. And I, I, I guess my final comment is that, um, not all jurisdictions have community visitor programmes. Um, some states have, um, mental health community visitors. Not all states have disability community, um, visitor systems. And I would think there would be enormous benefit, um, for there to have, um, community visitors in all jurisdictions. But you have to look at this mismatch between state legislation, which is setting up and empowering the community visitors and a Commonwealth framework that doesn't recognise, um, community visitors and operates on a complaint-based system.
Yeah, well, we, we, we have, as I think I mentioned before, uh, heard evidence about these issues at other hearings and I think it's a general issue that we will need to have a look at. But it's, uh, uh, yes, I can readily understand why you say such complimentary things about your colleagues. They do very important and very good work, but not in a way through no fault of their own that is integrated into the Commonwealth system, at least as far as I can tell at the moment. So I understand that there are, uh, relationships between the community visitor schemes, the Office of Public Advocate in this case, and the N D I S Q S C. But they're, uh, they're perhaps not uniform throughout the country and there are barriers to the communication of information and in particular the identification and addressing of systemic issues. All right, well, thank you very, thank you very much. I'm sorry, Mr. Griffin has been prompted into asking another question.
People with leave, whether they have any questions?
Yes, yes, I'll, I'll do that. I'll do, I'll, I'll do that. I, I did want to make one other, but I'm not going to ask you questions. I'm just going to note it that it does seem, uh, on the basis of some of the things that, uh, have been, have been said in this session and other evidence that we have heard, that there are issues relating to the, the pay conditions of, uh, support workers who have a very onerous job. Uh, it cannot be easy to operate in an environment such as the particular house that we're talking about. And I know that there's been evidence, uh, at other hearings about paying conditions and how people are to be appropriately remunerated and, uh, to be rewarded for additional training. So these are issues that we will have to have a look at and they're all interconnected fairly obviously and that's a part of what we have to do. So, that, um, having delivered myself of that soliloquy, uh, uh, does anybody seek leave to ask any members of? does anybody seek leave to ask any members of the panel a question? If not, no, not you. This is to the legal representative. You, you don't get that chance. All right, well, thank you very much. That's been a very, very interesting and helpful session. We're very grateful for the statements and for the very meticulous work that's been done in documenting your experience with the house. That has been very helpful uh to us, so thank you for coming, giving evidence and for those statements. Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Chair, can I indicate for those following the hearing, tomorrow we will commence at ten A M. We have evidence from Anne Congleton, who from, who is from the Victorian Department relevant to this issue. After the morning break, um one of my colleagues, Mr. Fogarty, will examine Mr. Scott McNorton from the N D I A. It's anticipated that will run through to about three tomorrow afternoon and that will conclude the evidence for this week.
Thank you very much. All right, in that case, we'll adjourn until ten A M tomorrow.
The role commission is adjourned.